Our July 12 city council retreat. And just starting off to first of all, say thank you for everybody for joining us. As is our custom, we kind of try and come together in ways so that we can have conversations and really dig deep into some of the issues that we are facing in the city. And so this retreat is focused on two areas. First is kind of our financial situation, making sure that we get kind of a review of 2025 and preview of 2026, trying to understand some of the opportunities available to us, some of the responsibilities we will have throughout this time period, certainly touching upon the slight hole that we found ourselves in at the end of 2024 with the bomb cyclone and getting introduction to our new finance director. And then the second half of the day is really focused on the community survey and our performance measures. So we had gotten the information on our community survey previously, but it was really just a, hey, here's the information. We didn't have a chance to really dig into it and get a sense of what are council members' thoughts? What do we find interesting about this? So we provided you with a little bit of homework there. We're going to do some of our traditional, write your stuff onto papers and put dots onto it so that we can really get a sense of how we want to approach these issues. So I guess I will take a moment and see if we have any public comments. I assume we don't have anybody from the public online. There is no one in person, so we should be good there. But for anybody who is watching this later, we always take emails, citycouncil@isiquawaw.org. So then we've got our individual council member check-ins. So the idea here is just, hey, let's take a little bit of time and go around the room and talk about what do you think is going well in this city? What do we think needs more attention? What's working? What isn't? Would anybody like to start?
I would like to get us going. Let's talk about some of the, some of the obvious wins. First, we've got a new finance director and we are, you know, fleshed out or filled out in terms of our leadership and direction team. And I think that is super cool. I'm really impressed with the police of late. I really love what I'm seeing in terms of emphasis on traffic, which was, has always been an important issue and has always taken backseat to other patrol, patrol related activities. So kudos to IPD for really getting out there. I saw one of our finest as I came around the corner, on the corner of Newport and Newport, which is always my favorite corner in town anyway. So super cool. And I also have enjoyed, have found informative, their use of social media to keep us as a community informed about what they are up to, not only traffic related, but also in terms of their larger mission. So super excited about what's going on with, with bond enforcement. So kudos there. In terms of opportunities for focus and improvement, I will hop on my hobby horse yet again. I think there's nothing more important right now than economic development. I really like our new economic development analyst, and I think his name is Jake?
Jack.
Jack, damn it. On the record, darn, anyway, he was, he's great. He's got an incredible amount of interest and energy. I think he's going to be really good for the town. I think our focus, I'm a little biased here, on the semi quintcentennial celebration next week, next year gives us a great opportunity to drive into some ways to promote Isquah. But I don't think we can achieve what we want to achieve in the midterm to long term if we do not have a more robust economic business climate in this town. My thoughts.
Somebody go on.
I think we're doing a good job of focusing on the three Ps. The three Ps would be parks, police, and propulsion. So parks is pretty self-explanatory. We're doing a great job with open space. We're doing a great job with having events that people like to attend and want to attend, building community and all the way up and down the age spectrum. That's great to see from the city. Patrol or police, as my fellow council members said, I'm glad that we're fully staffed out. I appreciate the promptness that I'm seeing in terms of when things pop up, it seems that we have someone close by that's able to respond. I appreciate the extra emphasis we're putting on for shoplifting by just patrolling through Safeway parking lot and the Target parking lot and up in the Highlands through the parking lots. Just their presence there sends a message that we care enough about the community to be out in the community as, as public caretakers. That's fantastic. Then propulsion, propulsion means moving people, moving water. So sewers, water, Cascade Water Alliance. We're doing a great job with, with our public works in terms of replacing pipes that are old and need to be replaced, keeping the water flowing to houses, keeping the other water flowing away from houses in the right place, in the right pipes. Thank you. Public works is unseen, but if something goes wrong, we hear about it, you know? And I think that when we had the, the water leak south of town, the response was robust. The communication was fantastic from the city in terms of what's happening. And I drive by there and I see that most of the damage has been repaired and most of the things look back to normal. And that's a pretty quick response and a pretty quick turnaround. So propulsion also involves, of course, moving people. And that's why I feel that we have traffic at peak times, but you can anticipate each time of the day, how long it's going to take you. So when I'm coming home from, from work, I know that if I take Front Street at this time, it's going to take me X amount of time to get through there unless there's an accident or incident or, or something that's blocking traffic. I think people appreciate that they can know with certainty how long it's going to take to get somewhere and plan for that. Even though the traffic is there, if we know how long it's going to take, I think our citizens are able to adjust their schedules, adjust their time along the way. And those three Ps are all centered around the people in town. And from my point of view, that's the most important element as we think about policy, as we think about the budget going forward, that all of those items serve the people and we need to be concerned about, you know, what enhancements we can make that can make their life a little bit better. If we do do cuts, how is it impacting the people? What can we do to mitigate those cuts along the way? Those are my kind of opening thoughts. Sure. Two things, other cities would love to have our, right? We have challenges. We have lots of fundamental strengths. We will apply those strengths to financial and organizational challenges that are in front of us. I will echo, we stabilize public safety, which is great. We continue to offer services and recreational options for people that they tell us time and time again, care about. All that's great. The people who live here can't work here and the people who work here can't afford to live here. And that's our fundamental challenge. It continues to be our challenge. We are in a post-COVID housing lull. We were having lots of, I won't call it workforce housing, but I will say it was probably what we now call missing middle housing that was being developed. Post-COVID, that has slowed down. Opinions can vary about why that is, but we need to get that train moving again. The other is strategic employer recruitment, right? We've got Costco and amen to that. We have a few other major employers in town, but we need a more strategic, robust effort to support major employers. We need a Costco every five to 10 years, right? We should have other major employers here coming to town, looking for development agreements. The Valley Floor, I believe, has room for it. So I don't know exactly how we do it, but I will just leave with the people who live here can't work here and the people who work here can't afford to live here. Thanks. I was also going to say in terms of what's going, well, echoing everything that's been said so far, in houses, I was going to talk about housing as well. I've been really happy with our ability to have lots of conversations about housing, especially over the last year. We've done a lot of work in middle, missing middle. We've done a lot of work to build a balance in our high debt funding that we could strategically deploy on affordable housing opportunities. The TOD has been in front of us more this year than in any year since I've joined the council and not always with major problems now. So that's just things that we can actually do something about, which feels good. And so I'm really happy about that. We need to keep up kind of the both the effort and the pace of housing work in the city. I will say one thing, and I don't know if anyone else feels this, but it does feel like the pace of everything feels slow. And I think that's just because we're in this post layoff world now where we have it's more staff, less staff. Other cities have been competitive and stealing some of our brightest planners such, and so things are moving a bit more slower and things like that. So something we just need to be okay with as policymakers and know that when we have policy conversations, there are always trade-ups around what are most prioritized efforts should be in the coming year in the budget, given our staff capacities. Those are just like two major things that are.
Excellent.
So Russell had PPT and I will talk about PEI. So I'm just going to echo what everybody else has said. I am so pleased with, happy with the police. And there was just an article this morning in the Seattle Times about Seattle is still about half of what they were in 2019. And here we are almost fully staffed. And the quality of the people that we're recruiting, I think, is very high. Again, the interaction that we have with the police a week and a half ago was just so professionally done, so neatly done. I don't think anybody knew that it was actually happening. It's just really, really nicely done. So I think that's just a really plus area for us. E, I am so impressed with emergency management and what we're doing there. And Jared is doing a fabulous job. I've asked him to come and talk to community groups. He just energizes people around the whole concept of emergency management. And I think that's going to be really important. When I was at the AWC conference, they talked about the importance of educating your community. And I think Jared's doing a good job on that. He might need some help, but we'll talk about that during budget. But I think we are head and shoulders above a lot of our fellow cities in that arena. And then shout out to our IT department because again, I came back from AWC with just a ton of questions. Are we doing this? Are we doing that? And the answer was yes, 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 yes. You know, they are on top of it. And I'm feeling like again, we are way, way ahead of some of our fellow cities in understanding the threats of cybersecurity and so forth. So those are my three things that I think are going really well. What's not going well for me is, well, I was really, really sorry that we lost Pioneer Project. And so I'm feeling like that was a major loss. We put a lot of time into creating that project or that program for having, to have that land sold. And now it's going to be a parking lot and a gas station, just very disappointing to me. So my, yeah, I guess my largest frustration is I do feel like we're not moving ahead on affordable housing as fast as we could be. We need to be addressing and having those conversations. So that would be the area where I really feel like we could be better.
Great. Kelly, do you want to come on and tell us a few things that you think are going well? Things that could do better?
Yeah, definitely. I think in terms of, you know, things we're doing well, you know, generally when we talk to people out in the community, people are very happy to live in Isquah and that's borne out by the data. I think we've heard, you know, from the community, similar things from you all about the police, like, oh yeah, there was an uptick in crime a few years ago, but it seems like they've hired more officers and things are getting better. So people are, in the community are really happy about that. I would say people, some of the concerns that we've been hearing a lot is traffic and speeding. And I think with the speeding aspect of things, I think one thing we as policymakers really need to think about is how do our street design standards contribute to speeding? So for example, I have not heard anyone in Old Town complain about speeding. And a lot of, a lot of that is because, you know, there's traffic and so you can't speed when you're stuck in gridlock. But part of it is also a lot of the residential streets are so narrow, you know, the alleyways where you do not, like, no one's going to be driving fast in there. Whereas in the Highlands, which are built to our more modern updated street standards, the streets are wide and it's basically the whole design of the road makes you feel like you want to go fast. One other, like, I saw this Facebook post from the police department the other day, which was like, they caught someone going 80 miles an hour on Tal, on 900 where the speed limit is 40. Now, obviously that's absurd, but like the whole design of that road makes it feel like a highway. And so you're like, oh yes, I'm on a highway, I should be going really fast. And so.
Oh. We lost, right after you said the speed was 40, excuse me, 40 miles per hour, we lost the rest.
Yeah, essentially my point is that like, I think while ticketing drivers for going fast is good for educational purposes, I think that's, it's kind of like a reactive thing, right? You can only catch someone once they're already speeding. So how can we design our streets to be safe so that people don't speed? For example, the street that I live on, it's like, there's, the two lanes in each direction are separated and each lane is like just barely the width of a car. So the speed limit is nine and you do not want to go faster than that because otherwise, and there's like speed bumps everywhere. So I'm, you know, if we're really serious about traffic safety and speeding, I think we need to start considering some of those things, especially, and I, I will take back what I said about I haven't heard anyone in Old Town complain about traffic. I have heard people complain about traffic on Front Street and there's definitely interest in getting some traffic calming measures. Oh no. Hello, hello, can you hear me?
You have heard something in, or like Front Street?
Can you hear me? Yes. Concerns about traffic safety on Front Street and specifically, you know, with the like crosswalks not being raised, it's really dangerous for people that want to get around and, you know, patronize our businesses in our historic downtown. So that's, that's definitely one of the, one of the issues that we've been hearing a lot. I think also with traffic, you know, it is, I think if that's your biggest complaint as a city, generally you're doing pretty well. That means that everything else related to running a city, like if our, you know, water, sewer, police, fire, we're not working well, those would definitely rise to the top of people's concerns. But on the traffic piece, I think we have to be realistic and realize that, you know, traffic is just people driving around. And the only way to actually solve that is to make it easier for people to get around without using cars, whether that be walking, biking, transit, carpooling, anything like that. And so I like, I enjoyed seeing, you know, what we're looking at in the commute trip reduction plan, but we've been making plans like that for many years. And so far as I can tell, there's been like pretty minimal results. So I would like to see some more focus on that because, I mean, people are seriously concerned about traffic. And, yeah, and I think echoing what others have said about, you know, housing and affordability, I think, I think the fact that we're actually, you know, going to break ground soon on the transit arrangement development is great. However, I think just high level. Like the fact that we have to, you know, it's like if every affordable housing project takes 10 years and requires cobbling together funding from 10 different sources, we're never going to, you know, solve the scale of the problem. So I'm definitely interested in seeing what we can do to explore some other, you know, more nimble solutions on housing.
Thanks, Kelly. Well, I love hearing what I've heard from everyone. There are diverse ideas that are being thrown out by everyone, but I haven't heard disagreement, which I think is really interesting. From my perspective, one of the things I wanted to highlight was I've really appreciated seeing the police take on kind of e-bikes and the, they're not even e-bikes, they're pedalless motorbikes, yeah, dirt bikes that are electric that have particularly been difficult up in the Highlands. And so I really appreciate the enforcement and the education there. I wanted to highlight the Fourth of July parade. That was really lovely. I know Councilmember Joe said that public works is often not seen, but in this area, I think they were very well seen in protecting the public in that area. And so I wanted to thank them for that work. Let's see, other areas. I agree with Councilmember Marks that housing is a problem. And I like the way you put that in that people who live here can't work here and people who work here can't afford to live here. You know, looking at the stats, there are 23,000 people that come into the city every day for work. Those are the people who can't afford to live here. And then we have way a few number of people that leave town for work each day. And it's only gotten worse as the return to office has come through, which is one of the reasons I think we're seeing traffic start to increase because it's not just Isquah residents who are leaving to go to work, it's also people from the South, like Maple Valley. I think it is important to take advantage of this period of construction lull to get our policies right so that what we are going to get when the construction and the finance situation comes back into a better position, that we are primed to be able to provide housing options that the residents need. But I also agree, we cannot do it effectively without also having the economic development portion of things that provide more jobs for people who can live here. Emergency management, very much appreciate highlighting that. At this point in the year, I am concerned about progress this summer. We have already started to see some brush fires along the 90 and areas east of here. I think it's really important that we recognize that as a more and more of an issue than we maybe would have considered 10 years ago. And then the Pioneer Project loss, that really gets me thinking about the future of light rail and our ability to provide housing in this key area. Not only that we promised to provide housing to our community, we said housing's going to be here. To the region, we said, you can provide us with light rail because we're going to put housing here. And to our future residents, we need to be able to provide housing near light rail. I think if we cannot get that right, we are either going to lose light rail or we are going to get light rail that is surrounded by parking lots. Neither of which I think are good opportunities for our community. So those are some of the things that I am thinking about. Anybody want to add a second comment on there?
It's probably worth also saying in terms of things not going well, not of anyone's fault at the city, but we have an enormous amount of need and we do not have the capital to meet the need that exists in the community. We've had many conversations about revenue sources and revenue loss over the next, last few years. And we're going to talk about, it sounds like an opportunity and a potential new revenue source today. So just something for us to continue to be mindful about, needs continue to outpace available funds.
Yeah. And I think it's important to recognize it's not just the direct service needs that the city provides at this point, but it's many of our nonprofits in the area that are both losing funding from the state, having the governor doing line item vetoes to very important direct service nonprofits in our area, but also lower donation amounts. And so many of those things will end up falling on the city as they do during hard times. And so you're absolutely right. The need is much higher. The revenue and available resources are lower.
Good work.
You know, from a very, very high level, we had a major transformative event 20 to 15 years ago with the Highlands and the towns. And as a, for that, since then, I have seen other East Side communities do the kinds of transformation that we envisioned for the central, or for the central area. And I'm thinking here specifically of Woodinville, right? And the four or one, five of them. So I'm an engineer and I'm generally bounded by looking around and seeing what other people have been able to do, right? Engineers are usually very visionary or more like, what's possible? That's possible, right? So I would like to see, you know, we have this great history of transformation. We should, we are and should be incredibly proud of the finances of towns. But it's been, right? And so as we talk about some of these things, you know, how do we get the transformational? I, I came on in 2009. We had just finished the central area plan. And, you know, we have plans, but you know, my view is at least since COVID, those have been stalled out and we haven't seen the kind of transformation. So how do we see that, given that other communities on the East Side have had that? So we should celebrate the transformation and the God in the aughts, but understand that it's been.
Polly, did you want to add anything?
Just Mayor Polly.
Oh. Mayor Polly.
Oh, thanks. Glad to be here, even if it's just virtual. It's kind of funny, I can still hear Kelly when you can't. So let me know as well if my mic is dropping out. I think you guys have touched on some major topics. Definitely traffic, transportation planning, getting ready for light rail and getting a mix of housing and jobs into the central Isquah area.
There you dropped out.
Okay, how's it now?
It got you back.
Oh, fantastic. So I don't have anything more to add to the list of stuff that you're talking about. I think you've hit all the right markers and glad to be here today with you all.
Excellent. Okay. Well, yeah.
Sorry, I just did my, my sound off.
No, 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 you had to pause for a moment and figure out, is that, and then go.
It's actually my legacy.
I think it was interesting what Councilmember Marks was just talking about, about Woodinville and Lothel having success in transformational where we've not had success. And I have a suspicion of why that might be, but I think it'd be worthwhile to actually dig into that and actually do some, some analysis. And Council President, I like what you said, that during this construction lull is an opportunity to make sure we got it right. So I think there's a couple of things. One is I don't want this to be, as a council member, but also me as a citizen, I don't want us to build something we don't want because that way we get to build something. I want us to build what we want. And so I think that there's a tension here that we have to be able to resolve about what it is that we want and what it is the market will build and how to balance those two things. So I applaud your, your notion of, let's take advantage of, you know, there's not a whole truckload of stuff going on right now. Let's take advantage of that to figure out how we get ahead of it and how we make sure we get what we want, but we get it. So thank you.
Great. All right. Well, I think it's really important to just kind of have this check-in time at the beginning. We don't often get a chance to just opine on what we think is working and isn't working and share information directly between us. And so it's a really important opportunity to have that and not be as constrained by what's on the agenda so that we can talk things out. We will have more opportunity after lunch also with the community survey ideas because those are some of the media issues that the community has identified are areas of high importance and low satisfaction. And so being able to dig into those will be important. We are ahead of schedule, which is always a good start to the day. So right now we're going to transition to the 2025 review and 2026 preview. And so I don't know who is going to start that out. And so, I don't know who is going to start that out.
I am.
Great. We'll get the presentation up.
So before we start the presentation, I wanna kind of just talk about some general themes. Um, not only uh, where I think uh, you'll be spending your time over the balance of twenty twenty-five, but also uh, talk about some concerns that, that I have, administration has uh, for uh, twenty-six. Um, when we look at uh, what will be on your plate uh, for the balance of the year, um, the police city facility conversation, uh, I ninety crossing, uh, Title eighteen uh, revisions um, are probably the three big things other than the mid-biennium budget um, that, that you'll be asked to look at. Uh, so first, the police city facility uh, task force that has been meeting over the last several months, they are concluding their work and they are scheduled to come before you on September fifteenth. Um, and so they are working on a series of recommendations. Um, I don't wanna steal their thunder, uh, but uh, I think you will hear from them, a focus on uh, the Sunset uh, City Hall as a police headquarters and to move as diligently as we can to move that forward. Um, they're also looking at uh, locations for a city hall and uh, will be making some recommendations that they think makes sense uh, and what a city hall might look like. It may not look like what we have, uh, but you know, certainly someplace that would house general government, but also uh, provide other community resources. Uh, so that is moving forward. A, a component part of all this is court. And as you know, we've been working with King County uh, for several months uh, on a lease for the facility um, uh, here in town. Uh, I'm happy to report that we are coming to a conclusion of those negotiations. Uh, there was a hiccup that we have overcome. Um, and so now uh, the city attorney and staff are going through the final version of an agreement. Uh, given summer vacations and things, um, we're not gonna have that to you in August as we'd hoped. Uh, so we're, oh, I'm sorry, we will have it to you. We were gonna, we were gonna have it at the July, end of July meeting. Uh, but we'll now have the contract on progress to live. So um, those negotiations have delayed us probably about three months. Uh, but our intention still is to move forward now in the fall uh, to vacate City Hall South and move the court uh, into the county facility. So that is good news. So those issues will be uh, in front of you in the fall. And I think as a council, you'll need to decide how much more you wanna take the discussion on city facilities uh, with the current council and how much would you like to wait until the first part of the sixth? Excuse me. Uh, the I ninety crossing, uh, this is something that is currently in committee. Um, there has been um, a discussion about a preferred location uh, for the crossing. Uh, but there's also a discussion about the real world around us and that it, you know, what, what's the next step with that? What funding is available? How realistic is that funding? Uh, and again, not to steal the committee's thunder, uh, what the council is gonna hear is that perhaps uh, this is not the time to continue pursuing that project uh, other than going back out to the community uh, getting confirmation that the work that's been done so far makes sense. Um, and then putting that project in a drawer. Uh, because the frank unfortunate reality is that there is no state and federal money available to us in a realistic way to continue the project. Could we do some initial uh, engineering work, which is what the staff proposed to the committee, the council committee a few weeks ago? Um, and the council committee kind of pushed back and said, why should we continue to spend money on a project when we know after that step what the next step looks like? And that doesn't make a lot of sense. So this is a big project, important project for the community. Um, but uh, asking the council to kind of look at all the facts and the work that's been done late before you and, and make some decisions um, about what the next steps for that country should be. Uh, so those are two uh, things that you're going to be seeing. A third uh, is kind of coming at you indirectly, and that is uh, revisions to Title eighteen. Uh, the community planning and development staff has been working on administrative changes uh, to that has been through planning, planning policy. Uh, it's also gone to the planning, development, and environment committee of the council. And while there really were no objections to the uh, changes before uh, the committee, the committee did spend quite a bit of time uh, kind of looking at Title eighteen and where he said, as a community and saying, you know, we hear there are issues. There are issues that have come up with the TOD project. Uh, there are issues that we've heard uh, from a development community. Uh, you know, do we need to uh, look at Title eighteen? And is Title eighteen or at least portions of it uh, becoming problematic for us in the development of housing? Uh, as I think several of you have touched on this morning, uh, this is not an easy question. Uh, it's not just a matter of let's amend the code, build more housing and everything's great. Uh, the community uh, has spent years crafting this code uh, with a very uh, specific focus, and that is to balance uh, housing development with the natural environment. And if that is going to change, how does it change? What's the community's role in making that change? Um, and so the, the committee is going to be raising this issue with you um, in the next couple of weeks. And from administration's standpoint, as we look to twenty-six and beyond, um, it's really important, I think, now for the council to begin having uh, the general discussion of what are your thoughts, what are your observations? And, and what kind of order is there that we wanna put some of these projects? We, revision of Title eighteen, we have a, a list of projects uh, that were important. As Mayor Polly uh, has mentioned, uh, staffing that we've had and planning has gone through some changes, and I wanna talk about that a little bit more in a minute. Uh, but I think it's important for the council to think about prioritization uh, in the third and fourth quarter this year so that the new mayor, the new council, when they convene in January uh, has benefit of thinking uh, so that they can make decisions right off the bat um, to direct the staff to move forward. You know, certainly uh, the comments you've all made about affordable housing. Um, there are component parts that we have uh, levers on, there are component parts we don't have levers on. Uh, the land use code is one of those levers. Um, and I think the council will uh, need to take time, um, if it can, and if you choose to uh, this year, to start the, looking at your list. And so that when the council convenes in January, uh, you, that the council can decide what next steps. So uh, those are, uh, besides the mid-biennium budget, I think, three of the, the main policy questions that the administration's gonna be asking the council to look at between now and the end of the year. Um, around all of this is the issue of staffing. Um, you're gonna hear from Stephanie Johnson this morning about uh, negotiation for labor agreements. Um, and as many of you have mentioned, we've had some good successes over the last year or two in hiring staff uh, in the police department and other departments. Uh, we've had the, the success. Uh, you know, and that success, I think, is attributed to a lot of different factors. Uh, salary benefits is certainly one of them. Uh, work environment for those office-based staff uh, saying that you only have to come into the office two days a week has been very attractive for the office-based staff. Uh, you know, over half of our staff doesn't have that option because their jobs don't lend themselves to that. Um, and so we've had to be mindful with as much flexibility as we can uh, in staffing. And so uh, as we continue the year and uh, move forward into next year, we wanna be mindful that uh, um, you know, those tools remain available to us. Because as you all described this morning, there's a lot of benefit from having good, experienced, qualified staff. Uh, there is a cost, however, to that, uh, financial cost, operational cost. Um, and so a, as you're thinking about these issues and thinking about priorities uh, moving forward, I would ask you to keep in the back of your mind issues of staffing um, uh, for all the reasons I've mentioned. Um, we're having a real challenge right now in our planning division. Uh, we have six uh, budgeted positions, four of them are now vacant. Um, so in addition to Stephen Padua leaving, um, Dan Martinez, a, a longtime city planner has separated uh, from the city. Doug Schlep, uh, another a long-time planner has left. Uh, and just this week, we received the resignation from Valerie Porter.
Doug Yormick.
Doug Yormick, I'm sorry, Doug Yormick. I wronged that. And then Valerie Porter uh, announced her resignation. Uh, she is going to the city of Rent. Um, we offered her, they raised a promotion. Um, and she basically said she wanted to move up. She wanted to have more complex projects uh, to work on. And so in those areas, when you have good staff uh, and a city our size, while we aspire to be bigger and bolder and all the things we wanted to aspire to every day, uh, the, the harsh reality is is that we are a city of a certain size, we only have uh, certain challenges to face. So we are now looking at four vacancies in our planning division. Uh, Kristen Leeson is the acting uh, planning manager and recommendation is she's going to leave. Uh, exactly, stay with us. Um, and Emily, Emily Medina, Emily, she came to us as Emily Adams, but it's now because of her married name, Emily Medina. Um, Emily is a tremendous asset for us, so we uh, will continue to support her uh, as being part of the team. So Kristen and Emily um, remain and we are actively recruiting uh, to fill those four positions. So as we look at projects and initiatives with planning, we look at permit processing. Um, you know, we're gonna have a pretty brand-new team here over the next few months in our planning division. Uh, you've talked also about economic development. You know that Jen Davis Hayes, our economic development and housing manager, left to go to the city of Kirkland. Uh, we have done uh, interviews uh, this week uh, for new uh, economic development manager. Uh, they went very well. Um, and our hope is that we'll have it as the, announce a decision on that position in the next week or so. So, so that is good news. And uh, you know, certainly uh, as we've talked to candidates, we've tried to be mindful of the things that you've all talked about today. You know, we wanna uh, inject a little bit of energy uh, to the work that we're doing. We need to have individual be active in doing deals. While the, the Title eighteen is a lever, you know, just going out there and working, working the community, working the larger region is within our abilities as well. So uh, that is another piece of staffing. And then the last piece of staffing, before I talk a little bit about the mid-year budget challenges, is the police chief who joins us this morning from Rome. Uh, good evening, Chief Shuan, thank you for joining us. And we'll, we'll catch you here to talk about the public safety sales tax in a few minutes. Uh, but Paula has uh, uh, let us know informally that she is uh, planning to retire next spring. Um, we'll be making a more formal announcement over the next few months. And so uh, that will be a major challenge for us um, to look and replace uh, Paula, who has done a tremendous job uh, bringing the Isipaw Police Department post-pandemic from the brink. And I don't think that's exaggerating.
Yep.
Um, to uh, the fine uh, operation that is today. So we fully intend to hold Paula's feet to the fire for every moment she's still with us. Um, she's not, not gonna coast into this by any means, certainly that's not her style. Uh, but that is gonna be our next uh, major uh, staffing challenge, I think. It's to replace the police chief and we'll start that process all likely in the very first part of next year. Um, we're gonna talk this morning, uh, when I conclude about the mid-year budget issues. We'll talk about the public safety sales tax, we'll hear about uh, um, some uh, negotiation issues. Um, so what else are you gonna see at this mid-year budget? Um, uh, the administration's feeling at this point is that we don't believe we need to make major uh, expense reductions uh, in the mid-biennium. Uh, that we feel good about what we're hearing, you'll hear from Kristen in a minute, uh, some of the major indicators, um, you know, kind of balance out. And so we think we're pretty much on track, um, given uh, the two-year budget. Uh, we don't wanna be, um, we don't wanna overreact to the, the, the changes around us. Uh, we, we think the indications we're seeing are good ones. And so we do not plan at this juncture uh, to come to you with eh, expense reductions. Uh, we will look at revenue, uh, fees and charges, we will look at what we're charging for jail rates. Uh, so those things you should expect to see when we come back to see you in October or so. Uh, but you will not see recommended expense reductions. Uh, when we look at uh, what we may need to reconsider as far as expenses, um, in addition to what is currently in the two-year budget, uh, the issue of emergency preparedness weighs heavy. Um, the uh, the staff did a half-day tabletop exercise this past week on a wildfire. Um, Jared Snyder, our emergency manager, came up with a whopper of a, a whopper of a scenario. Uh, he picked July sixth, twenty twenty-sixth. And July sixth, we are gonna know that date very well because it is going to be a double-witching day because not only will it be the conclusion of the uh, two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary Fourth of July holiday, it will also be the day of the final World Cup match here. It's, yeah, so it's the round of sixteen, so it is, it is a very significant match. And so he chose that day to light a wildfire. It is the one. And uh, we spent several hours uh, going through what we would do with foreign visitors here in the community uh, for the World Cup match. People uh, enjoying the end of their Fourth of July holiday. Um, and, and, and what it did showed is wildfires are tough for us and we need to be thinking about communication, how we can communicate to our residents, how we can communicate to our visitors. Um, and so uh, that sobering exercise really has me thinking about uh, the resources that we have budgeted for emergency preparedness and thinking that there are probably things we need to do in twenty-six that are not currently in the biennial budget. So uh, we're still working on that, we need to come up with, you know, financing, funding for that. Um, but I think that may be a, a, a little wrinkle that you might not otherwise expect to see. So I wanted uh, to bring that up. Let me conclude by just talking a little bit about twenty-six and beyond. Um, you've covered many of the topics already yourselves this morning. Um, uh, the Title eighteen piece, looking at uh, levers for affordable housing, I think are very important and that's already on your radar. Uh, permit processing, um, you know, we continue to be diligent about making changes. Uh, the council authorized a position for a permit coordinator that Tina Eggers had been filling on a, an interim basis before her retirement. We're now uh, concluding a process to hire that position full-time. Um, with the four of six planners to be new, I think there's some, some opportunities there to, to set some better, um, some better practices um, in place with that. But that's something that we wanna look at. Uh, you've already talked about transportation, um, and there's lots of component parts to that. I think the council um, over the next year or so is gonna have to come to grips with which pieces of that puzzle you want to lean into, uh, given limited resources. Um, the operating capital revenue and expenditures is, is Councilmember Representative Paul mentioned on the, uh, the capital side, uh, there's lots of stuff we don't have money for. And the federal government getting out of the business, uh, federalism completely uh, is really gonna have an impact on certainly all transportation, roadway, infrastructure projects. Uh, but we also have local projects, park projects, um, that we're gonna need to focus on. We're gonna open up the wonderful uh, capital projects we've been doing downtown. Uh, the park and the improvements to the senior center. And like uh, whenever you improve your house and you do one piece and then you look at the next room and you say, gosh, how did I let this go? Um, I, I fear the railroad right away and the depot and the adjacent buildings are the next room in our house that we're gonna wanna look at. And so uh, we have no money to do any of that. And so the issues of a park district, um, Samamish is looking also at a park district. You know, are there opportunities for us to talk further and create new mechanisms uh, for funding there? Um, economic development, you've already covered. Uh, you have the administration's commitment that we hear you. Um, that, that again, Jack, our new economic development coordinator, really smart guy, uh, we'll hire him a good partner uh, as an economic development manager and continue to work on that. But that'll be more, I think, in front of the council over the next year than perhaps you've seen it in the recent past. Um, urban forest management, another uh, real concern. Mayor Polly, thank you for your leadership uh, over the last several months, reaching out to the community uh, to remind those that care deeply about our natural environment that nothing happens automatically. Uh, that Isipaw has a tremendous history of individuals stepping up and saying how important uh, our natural environment is, uh, uh, streams, the hills, the forests. Uh, we need a next generation of that because it's so important. We can't do it all on our own, we will not have the, uh, financial resources to do all on our own. And we need help from the community to focus on that. Um, and then lastly, communications, how do we communicate with our residents? Uh, writ large, how do we communicate with them in disasters? How do we communicate with them with the good things that are happening day-to-day? Is it electronic? Is it billboards? Is it newsletters? Whatever it is, um, everyone, all of our colleagues in local government have this challenge, but we've gotta focus on it and we have to. And we have to continue to be everywhere and to communicate in every different ways. One of the things that came out of our wildfire discussions was how do we communicate to people? How do people know where to go? You know, we have some very good electronic signage that is at the end of its useful life. We probably need more of it. And so is that, is that a tool in our toolbox that we need to leverage for emergencies of all sorts? And so communications is a focus and something that I hope that the, the council, if you choose to, the end of this year, talk more about. But certainly it's something the administration is going to ask the council to look at. Six. So council president, members of the council, thank you for giving me a few minutes to kind of just give a, a general overview of where I think you'll be headed over the next six months, but also into 26. We do have some specifics to shift into. So unless there's any general questions, I will, we'll put up the slides.
We love your sobering talks. Yes, so such a positive way to just really bring us together. And no, it's important to be realistic and to recognize some of the issues that we are facing.
But as, but as some of you said, both all our neighbors would, would love to have our problems. You know, and you did, all did a great job of sharing the strengths. And I agree, I, this, the team that Mayor Polly has assembled is an outstanding one. And so we are, I think, as well equipped as we can be to deal with the challenges that face us. But you know, Issaquah is a, is a really special place. As I'm going to vamp just two more seconds, I have to share with you something I'm really upset about. And that is this morning's Wall Street Journal takes a swipe at Issaquah. So we are going to have to, we're going to have to address, keep going, oh, you already have it. So this morning's Wall Street Journal talks about the wonders of the Kirkland brand and how Costco has done such a lovely job of using the Kirkland brand to make lots and lots of money. But there is one sentence here that Mayor Polly, I think, is going to have to light a fire under the Wall Street Journal. And let me read, Costco launched a private label in 1995 and called the Kirkland signature, a nod to the company's headquarters in Kirkland, Washington. For obvious reasons, the name stuck even when Costco moved to nearby Issaquah.
What's obvious about?
So, so we are going to have to make, we are going to have to make a big stink with the Wall Street Journal. Or they're, or they're swiped our fine community. Just because little guys go to New York can't pronounce a spot doesn't mean that others can't. So again, people would, people would die to have the problems we had, including the Wall Street Journal taking a swipe at us on a second. So with that, let me introduce Kristen Garcia. Kristen comes to us from the city of Arlington, where she was the finance director for the last 10 years. Before that, she's worked in other public sector roles. We're really lucky and fortunate to have Kristen. She brings with her great experience of doing the kind of work we desperately need her to work with. But also the bedside manner that you all told me was your number one requirement, that you want a finance director that can be a partner with you, that can explain things in a clear, concise, understandable way and be creative to look at solutions. So Kristen, we're thrilled that you're here and I'll let you get into an overview of where we look at quarter one.
Very good. Well, thank you so, thank you so much. I appreciate being here. I'm very blessed to be here and I hope I can meet all of your expectations. I will work very hard for you. So feel free to reach out to me. I'm very open to feedback. So if I am not giving you what you need, please let me know. That's how I learn and grow and I do, as Molly mentioned, want this to be a partnership. With that, I'm going to give an update on Q1 financials. And I'm going to talk about some major revenues in the general fund, touch base on where we are with general fund expenses, refunds, then maybe some potential amendments going forward. And before I kind of dive into the numbers, I want to explain where the numbers come from. So what we do is we take first quarter actual data and then we project out where we think that we're going to be throughout the end of the year. And then we compare that to budget to kind of check and see where we think we might land.
Kristen, can you pause for just a second?
Yes.
Are you monitoring any hand raising?
I, let me, let me see if I can achieve that. I think, I think we're good.
Yes. Yeah, because I can't see it on any of the screens. And then I just want to check in with our members that are virtual and just make sure that you're able to hear effectively.
Yep, I can hear and see the screen when it was shared, but now the screen's not shared, so I can't see anymore.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, I will join on my, I'll join on my second device.
Okay, fantastic. We'll get the presentation back up.
Thank you. Would you like me to pause until we have it up ready?
No.
Go ahead.
Are you sure?
Okay. Is that not working now? Is that not working now? I hope technology works. Okay, me and Matt. Yeah, you can go. Okay, these are the four major revenues in the general fund. These are important for us to look at and monitor because they represent about 75% of total general fund revenue. So where we are through first quarter, it looks like sales tax, utility tax are going to be a little bit less than where we in. The forecast is showing that they'll come in a little bit less than where budget is. BNO tax expected to come in more and then property tax is more predictable. So that looks like we're going to be on track with budget. The next slide will show kind of the net effect, yes.
Just a quick question before you march on. I mean, I'm, I'm just drawn to the BNO tax.
Yeah.
Because that's like not just a little bit of a variance, that's like a big variance. Any, are you going to get into the whys?
I don't have enough detail at this point to speak about the whys, but I can certainly.
Yeah, you could send us something after the meeting.
And we're going to come back at the first meeting in August with some general information as well. Depending on how the discussion goes today, we, we were going to just put it on consent. We may also put, we may throw it in our business. So, and so we'll take your notes.
Okay, great, thank you.
And keep in mind, this is first quarter. It is a little bit harder to predict through the rest of the year when you're in first quarter because you don't have a lot of data. You're just looking at three months of actual data. We're kind of looking at historicals and kind of where we've been to project out through the rest of the year. I think once we get into quarter two, we'll have a, a more solid sense of where we are and where we expect to end the year.
And, and, and we hope to have a little bit more information. You know, finance folks are want to be absolutely precise. So you're, you're, you're hearing the absolute precise stuff. Everything we've seen so far for the second quarter continues to track with us. We've not seen anything in any operations. Finance folks, of course, are always reluctant to give you numbers until, until month ends. So we can't give you a second quarter because we don't, haven't closed the month of June yet. But you know, th- this is indicative of what we've seen in the second quarter as well. We'll give you more details.
Yeah, and I, I would like at some point, and if it's August, whenever, to, to have the underlying drivers of this. I mean, because is it something transient? Is it a long-term trend? Is, is it going to reset itself? What's, I mean, what's, what's the driver? So you can make some decisions about what to expect in, in not just the next couple of months, but in the, the longer term.
To the extent we can, we will.
Perfect, thank you.
And similar to that, I think one of the things we saw in our previous budget was sales tax was down particularly for construction, sales tax. And so being able to break out the sales tax into the different portions of that and understand what is contributing to the almost 7% decrease would be important.
Okay. Okay. I believe sales tax is going down across the state. So it'd be, you know, it'd be nice at some point, if, if the first meeting in August would be plenty to just sort of see how are we in relation to the state? How are we fitting into the trends?
Welcome to day six.
Yeah. Good information. And, and we do break down the sales tax at that detailed level. We can break it out, retail constructions, we can definitely share that with you and then how we compare. Sure. Time for that in August, thank you. So this slide, it's just showing basically the net effect of what I talked about on the previous slide. So overall, yes, we do have a big variance in the BNO tax. Get some more information in detail on why that is and if we think that trend will continue throughout the end of the year. But overall, right now, based on those four revenues, the difference is about a half a million dollars. So less than what we're, what we're expecting in the budget. But what, as Molly mentioned, you know, a half a million dollar variance and 66 million, I think, revenue budget isn't anything to be overly concerned about right now. Obviously, we need to monitor and pay attention. That's why we like to look at these four major revenues because these swings can drive different conversations. But overall, nothing concerning, continue to look at it and we'll dive in more detail.
And, and before you get to the next slide, another thing that probably we should just talk about is it's a two-year budget. And I think we haven't done a good job of describing actuals in that context. So what we're going to do moving forward and what other neighboring communities do is we're going to give you a 25 budget and 26 budget together. It's the biennium rather than saying this is, this is, you know, three months out of 24 or three months out of 12. Because I think it's just a little bit easier to understand. I think we went back and forth a little bit for the first biennium budget that we did, but in talking to Kristen, we're just going to say this is calendar 25, this is calendar 26, this is where we are. You know, it, it's, it's more or less halves, especially on the operating budget. But just to make that clarification, because I think we, where we were inconsistent in the last biennium.
And I think if we look at each year individually, I think it's a little, it's a lot easier to identify if things are not trending in the, the way that we want to. And we can take corrective action if needed sooner than if we were to look kind of just the biennium as. Special experience. Ready to go on to the next slide? So looking at general fund expenses overall, they're about 27% of budget or about 2% more than where we would project them to be at first quarter. Again, not overly concerning at this point in the year, it's so early. But these are just known unbudgeted expenditures that may trigger an amendment. So this is more of just a heads up or an FYI that these might be coming again at our August update. I think we'll have a better sense of what we're actually looking at. But again, I, I don't want to have council be surprised at the end of the year when we get to the amendment. So just trying to give you information about what we know right now. Then the next slide is to check in on real estate excise tax. Right now through first quarter, we is on track to surpass forecasted revenues. It will likely exceed by the time we get through second quarter, will exceed budgeted projections. We had two large transactions in April and May. So we, we will know by second quarter that we're likely going to exceed budget. And so we'll exceed budget through the end of the year as well. That was a very quick check-in for my first day, five days six. I will bring more information. I took some notes from y'all of what you're interested in hearing in August and you'll hear me again in the next.
So we'll, we'll give you that. Thank you for the questions. We'll make sure that there's, there's plenty of time on that. Did you have a question, Councilman Bill?
Yeah, Kristen, if you can go back to the real, real estate excise tax slide. Sometimes we look at this as kind of a, a barometer indicator of turnover of, you know, homes in the real estate market health. When we take out the two large transactions that you pointed to, can you give us any comments on what we're seeing in the market in terms of sale homes, turnover, the general health of, of things as it reflects in the tax?
If we take out those two large transactions, I think we're, we're going to be on track with where budget projections are. Those two large transactions are just going to really surpass where we thought. So I think outside of that, we would be in line with where we had predicted.
Okay.
Based on what I've seen so far.
Thank you.
But that's Q1, right?
That is Q, this is Q1.
Formed with actuals that we know about in Q2.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's the challenge of having a meeting on the 12th of July. Is that we don't, we don't have a second quarter wrapped up just yet, but we know, we know the highlights.
Right.
Any other general questions?
What's an ITS bucket?
It's coming up on a future council agenda. It's the, but it's the truck that does the traffic signals.
Oh, the ones with the actual.
It's the extending bucket truck. The administration did not recommend replacement despite the fact the department had asked for it. So we didn't have the money and then the bucket truck broke and the cost to repair it exceeded the value of the bucket truck. And so what we are kind of the council with is now the purchase of a new bucket truck and repair the other bucket truck in order for us to be able to sell it. So there you go.
So if we could put something just on the board, Wally indicated that having the retreat in July doesn't give us necessarily all the information that we, we may want. If we could discuss whether or not July is still a date that we'd like to have for the retreat at the end, I appreciate that.
I was thinking the same thing because we also don't know what CPI view is right there. It'd be so nice to have that. Watch that, what is it?
Well, I know in previous years or budget years, it's been important to get our feedback early so that the budget can be developed.
And, and with a finance director in place, we can get you, we'll be able to get you mid-year, whatever date, even if it's not. The, all the accountants have blessed every penny. We can get you now.
We'll be able to get this.
Yeah.
Doing Q1 now, we'll, we'll work. More time.
So you recommend keeping a July date.
Because there's bigger issues, quite honestly. Having a finance director in place will make the information available for a July meeting greater.
Great, thank you.
And if I may add, from my perspective, I think it is helpful in a budget year to have a retreat a little bit earlier. That gives me time to work with the rest of the departments on making sure that we're capturing council priorities in the budget, so.
And do you feel like that July date is the earlier that you're, would be interested in or even earlier than that?
We, we will, we'll have their party in January.
Oh, that, okay. That is earlier than that.
Yeah. So, so what?
This is the first meeting?
No.
I would probably request we would have a tension before then, but very good.
Yeah, I know. So what we've done is we've done a January meeting to get general priorities. And then we come in July, things where we're headed. And then they see the budget.
That's fantastic. Thank you for following to ask.
All right, let's move on to, again, one of the major issues facing the council for the biennial budget review. And that is the potential of adding one 10% a sales tax for public safety. Washington State Legislature has authorized that, the, it becomes law at the end of July. And I've got slides that talk a little bit about what that is. So there's all sorts of rules. The slide talks about what the rules are. It's kind of a two, two-pronged piece. There's the ability for council manic action to create the sales tax. And then once that sales tax is created, there is also grant money that the legislature has made available that we would have access to if the sales tax has been implemented and other requirements have been met. And Chief Shuan is on the call to address the slide here and a couple, couple of slides that talk about those, those other requirements. So this slide says the action has to be taken by June 30, 28 in order to access the grant money. The money, the revenues from the tax must be spent on criminal justice purposes. So this is not adding to, but this can, you know, supply a general fund money. So we believe that a 1/10th of percent sales tax is a value of about $2.2 million. So that's a $2.2 million addition in revenue that we can then allocate to our public safety. And if the council chooses, free up $2.2 million for other things. Give you a sense of where we sit with sales tax right now, it's at 10%.
I'm going back to that other slide. Can you just quickly talk about where we are for public defenders? And would this money be able to, could we use this money for public defenders?
Yes.
For that behavioral health?
Yes.
Yeah, so we did give them a pay raise this year.
We did.
Yeah, okay.
And we're likely going to need to do it again. The world of public defenders have gotten no better since the last time we've talked.
Right.
And you know, the, the caseload issue, you know, i- is turned out the way we feared it would. And so communities all over Washington State are, are scrambling. I think we are probably one click better than most, but that's all. Because we have been very forthright with the, the company that provides our public defender services. Uh, because we have been very forthright with the, uh, the company that provides our, our public defender services. Um, and they are turning down business elsewhere and sticking with us, at least for now.
All right.
So the communities that are only now starting to scramble are finding there's nobody to service. Yeah, I think it was. Looking, rent, I think I recall, uh, went out and didn't get anybody responding. So it is, it is a, a major, major issue.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to be sure that we've got, uh, that we're, you know, that we're aware and uh focused on that because.
We are.
Yeah.
But, but again, we're only, we're only this much better than everybody else. I wish we were this much better, but we're this much better.
Okay, great.
Did you say we don't, we wouldn't qualify for the grant bucket of money unless we take action on the sales tax? Or are those two separate things?
Well, what one be gets to, so the grant money, you're only eligible for the grant money if you've enacted the sales tax, either now or had previously happened.
Really?
No. Chief Juan, I'm not misspeaking, am I?
No, that's correct. And at least fifty percent is solely used for attracting and retaining additional commissioned law enforcement um to be used for the grant.
So, so perhaps Chief Juan, since we've got you, uh, the next slide, I was just to remind you about the breakdown of where the tax stands and where it goes. We get uh pieces uh from various places. Next slide. Shows where we're at currently, based on our neighbors, uh, in informal discussions with my colleagues around the region. Uh, most, my sense, most communities are going to do this. Um, not all, but most. Uh, next slide. So Chief Juan, uh, good evening. Um, if you could talk a little bit about the grant eligibility as you know it and where do we stand in actually being eligible based on the requirements?
Yes, um, thank you. Hello, everybody from Italy. Um, so yeah, just a couple of things, the funding, um, as you mentioned. President of King County Chiefs and all of the other jurisdictions that I've been talking to and I've had contact with are also moving forward with this as well. The funding would be for hiring um different things. Um, at least fifty percent must be used solely for attracting and retaining additional commissioned law enforcement. Um, the remaining fifty percent has to be used for criminal justice, which means DV, advocates, legal, behavioral health, et cetera. January first of twenty twenty five, the cities that have less than fifty thousand um population can impose the tax and use that. Um, so we fit in that category as of January first of twenty five. And um, some of the basic training aspects that have to, which we've already been following, is that the first six months that if you are a fully commissioned, you must attend a academy, um, which we are pretty. I'm sorry.
Sorry, we were chattering here. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, and so in the first um six months, which we already followed that, we don't let, some agencies happen to put people on the road before they attend a full academy and we do not. Um, so we're already in compliance with that and we um slate them to go to the first immediate academy available. Um, unless that you have um permission from, like if there's a extension of some sort that is needed, then you have to get permission from the commission. Um, and then for those with limited commission, which would be like your corrections officers, your bailiffs or your um park ranger position. They have to go to a full academy now and it has, they have to go within uh the first year of being employed. Um, so those are some of the biggest things um right now. Washington's fifty first in the nation for law enforcement staffing per capita um and falling further behind. So that's one of the reasons for this initiative that they're um imposing. Um. See if I'm missing anything. Um, we're already meeting the requirements as far as the po- policy and use of force standards. I'm also on the committee um with the state and WASPIC for our use of force reporting and guidelines. And so um my actual role is with the Attorney General's Office and collaborating and communicating with them and making sure we're in compliance as well as other agencies. And. Um, as far as establishing policies related to civil protection orders, um, that's another uh big piece that is, uh, we have a bunch of staff that works with and is on committees statewide for keeping those in compliance as well with our protection order policies. And we provide twenty five percent of local funding match for any new officer positions funded was another piece that um was mentioned in the grant or the House bill.
Thanks. Okay, we've got some questions.
Chief Swan, can you um tell, so what, what is covered under civil protection orders? Are those domestic violence orders or what, what all is under that umbrella?
Correct, civil protectioners, um, they could be, civil protectioners are like an anti harassment order um as well as depending on which, where it falls. But yes, that could be a, a protection order, a no contact order, um, those all fit in that category.
Good, thank you.
And are we already covered on um policies for civil protection orders and court order surrender firearms?
Yes, we are. Um, in fact, we've just increased our capacity in our evidence room um because we had, someone had to surrender, I think it was seventy five weapons. And so we didn't have a place to store them and we had to get creative. And so um recently our evidence, um, or sorry, facilities assisted in securing a new cage in our property evidence room. Um, so we could be in compliance and continue that process.
Of course you are, because you guys are always on top of things. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Um, is there anything else we, yeah, go ahead.
Can I ask, uh, the, on the sales tax breakdown, the slide that you had, that doesn't include, Councilwoman Martin, you were saying the county is considering a point one percent increase in sales tax too, right?
Yes. Eric. So, so King County could add their own. So our residents could take.
In addition.
Right, in addition. So, so the King County could do a tenth and we could do a tenth. So it would be a net increase of two tenths.
Plus this other.
Or would that be?
But that's not possible, see. Right. But in terms of the total. At the end of.
Yeah, so, so, so there's a lot, there's a lot headed to the sales tax potentially. Um, and that's a larger purposes, that's just a larger impact to the residents paying that high level of sales tax. So, you know, one of the considerations for the council is that, yeah, this was a great deal, two point two million dollars. It largely takes care of our, I think, our operating budget challenges, it's a big chunk of it. But then with what the county adds, um, it's going to be a lot, it's going to be a month, probably one of the highest sales taxes in the country. Well, I'll say that. And so.
Something, something income tax, something, something. Um, yeah. Okay, uh, Kelly, Councilmember Jane.
Um, yeah, so my question is, so if, oh, if this grant funding is meant to hire new officers, but my understanding is that we're almost fully staffed as a department. Does that, how does that impact our eligibility for the grant funds if we don't necessarily need to hire new, for new positions? Or, you know, do we actually need to hire new positions and the grant funding could help with that?
Yes, so the idea would be that we would be expanding. So we have, we're, we're, and Stephanie can speak more to this in a little bit, but, uh, you know, we're, we're largely at, at budget. And so then the opportunity is can we hire more officers beyond the current budget? And that this grant would help with that. One of the challenges when you get a grant of any sort to hire ongoing staff is that at some point the grant goes away and you have to make up the difference. And so, um, we're not asking to go forward with the grant this morning. We just want to give you a kind of a lay of the land because uh there are consequences to adding staff with grant funds that then go away. So um we would come back at a future meeting and talk more particulars about that.
Wally.
Uh, yes, Chief Swan?
Um, also to um Councilmember Kelly's point is that it's not just for attracting, it's also retaining additional, or retaining our current staff. And that's the other reason it's supposed to be that fifty percent of that is also supposed to be used as for the retention of the officers that we do have as well.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Can, can any of these funds be used for force multiplier programs like plate readers and drones and stuff like that? Or does it all have to be used for staff?
Uh, it's intended specifically for staff and as I mentioned, that fifty percent they've allocated specifically must go to retaining and attracting. Um, it depends, I'm sure, on how that is um looked at and.
We've lost it for a moment there. We'll work on our wifi. Turn our camera off. Yep, now we can hear you.
Okay, um, so the other fifty that's not for attracting or retaining is supposed to be for criminal justice, whether um that's for staffing or equipment for behavioral health, um staffing and equipment for legal counsel, for advocates, for DV. Um, it would have to be, I'm sure, approved if it was something other than those specifics that were listed in the grant itself.
So let me make sure I heard it right. We can't use any of it for force multipliers?
It doesn't sound, it, this was intentional for staffing. That was the whole purpose of the actual grant that the, was put in place was for staffing reasons because of what was going on with probation and, and, I mean, sorry, prosecutors and defense attorneys. As well as um the biggest thing that was pushed through in reading this bill was that the deficit that Washington is in place. And being that we're fifty first in the nation for law enforcement staffing, even this um hundred million would not move us from last place. So this is just a, a goal to get us moving in that direction. Um, where it's still emphasized that we prioritize de-escalation, we highlight crime prevention. Um, and we, we team up and, and, you know, slow down and look at what the staffing needs are. Those are some of the biggest things. And there's no data, because there was some concern that increasing officers would increase arrests. And there is no data of any kind showing that that would be the case.
Thank you. I just want to put a marker on the table, dollars are sensible, right? So things can go in different places. There's a number of technologies that are emerging right now that are really exciting, that aren't that expensive. King County's looking at it, other areas are looking at it. We, we may, may want to consider it if we go forward with something like this, uh, whether we want to put uh general fund money towards some of those, some of those emerging technologies.
And as you talked later this morning about priorities, that would be good to get some feedback on. Because uh if the council does choose to go forward with the sales tax, we already have a budget for next year, it doesn't happen. And so in theory, that's two point two million dollars, more or less, of new revenue that we have allocated. And so if there's something you'd like to do, police or anything else, uh, there'll be some flex, we'll need some of it, I think, to make up some deficits. But I mean, there'll be a little bit of flexibility out there, so that'd be useful to get feedback bigger this morning.
I know one of our um recent conversations about the school zone safety cameras included additional um police and court staff in order to um kind of handle that program. So how, if those positions are paid for by that, it, when does that come into our budget? How does it relate to this? And how does that relate to potential growth in our police staffing?
Uh, it doesn't relate to any of this. Um, we can take those expenses off the top from the uh revenue raised through the tickets. Um, so it will adjust police staffing, as we've talked about previously with the council, to manage the program. Uh, but that doesn't put more officers on the street to do anything. It's just staff, so, of officer to review the ticket and then court staffer to process the rest. So that's what the council's previously.
So we're really hiring someone to sit behind the desk?
That's correct. We're using overtime dollars or however we can, can use it for, for the, for the speed of safety.
Chief Swan, it's Chief Swan?
Uh, yes, um, just so, uh, just so you have an understanding also for that specific, there was a new bill that was, or in that bill that was put into place that it doesn't have to be a sworn officer any longer who reviews speed zone or red light camera tickets. So it doesn't have to be a fully commissioned officer as far as like you were saying, sitting behind a desk, which is helpful.
Yeah, because hiring a commissioned officer to sit behind a desk sounds like it would be difficult, both expensive and.
Communities come up with other options to make that happen.
Yeah.
So, but as Chief Swan said, now there's a little bit more flexibility.
Okay. Well, I think it would still be interesting to understand as we are looking at, you know, kind of some of these dollars coming in, what our staffing levels look like, what they look like with this additional positions, if we have intention to have them as commissioned officers or not. Um, and just how that relates to other cities in the area.
So are there any questions about the uh, the language of the law on this public safety tax?
We need a public hearing.
I'm sorry?
Process wise, will we need a public hearing?
If, if the council is agreeable to pursue this, what we'll do is we'll fold it into the mid-biennium budget discussions. Um, and so I guess looking this morning at the council president, if there's at least any objection this morning to taking a next step that to, to put it as part of your budget discussion.
So we'll check.
I'm not seeing any objection here in the room and so.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, uh, this would be something that would have, the council approves it, it would go into effect in January. We've got a little bit of time and so we'll work with uh finance uh and police to make that as part of the package of issues for the mid-biennium budget review.
Great. Secretary of Defense President?
Yes, so can we expect, since it's a one tenth to one percent, uh, we're getting two point two million for our court housing. Are we expecting a very similar? It would be almost exactly similar, right, for this or expecting two point two million annually for this criminal.
That, that, that's our sort of back of the envelope number that we use.
Okay.
I mean, it, it varies, of course, based on actual, but that's, that's the number we use to budget.
Okay, great, thanks.
Hey, and then the rest of the presentation looks like labor and personnel update.
Okay. Super. My turn. All right, while Tisha's pulling this up, um, Wally teed up a staffing conversation well that I hope that I can fill in some blanks for. Um, I think that um one thing you'll just see as a framework um that I have included here that um for discussion is really centered around uh attraction and retention of staff. And so while uh HR is busy filling those uh positions um that Wally talked about, uh, the latter half of the year, we are certainly going to need to focus on what twenty twenty six wages benefits and beyond look like. Could advance, Tisha. Um, this is just a visual of what our current staff makeup is as of today, um, as told by payroll. Um, so uh we've talked about it before, uh, about the fact that we have uh eight bargaining groups now. Um, that makes up uh sixty percent of our workforce. We have a hundred and sixty five uh employees spread across those eight bargaining groups. Um, the groups with an asterisk are our interest arbitration eligible groups uh in the police department. Um, we also, um, forty percent of our staff makeup is non-represented. So we have a hundred and three employees currently uh non-represented. And then uh you all uh make up a, a portion of what's on the payroll as well. Um, what's not represented here is that we have a really large volume of part-time, non-regular and seasonal employees in the city that help augment our um staff. Um, you know, parks and community services has the volume of them, but um we run about two hundred to two hundred and fifty part-time non-regulars on our payroll at times. So um while our staff makeup right now is two hundred and seventy five employees, um, the actual number on payroll right now is around five hundred to five fifty. Uh, especially right now in the peak season um of summer programs. Um, how that ratio exists against um uh twenty twenty. How that ratio exists against twenty twenty-five budgeted FTE? The budgeted FTE number is two ninety-six point two five. So we are down right now about twenty-five positions. We've talked about a few of those today. Just to kind of fill in some of the gaps of what we've been talking about, we have five vacancies of the police officer classification. We have four vacancies, corrections officers. Wally talked about the four planner vacancies. With Chris Kibowski's retirement and Cassidy's promotion, we've got a public records analyst. The permanent coordinator position also, aside from the planners and CPD, a budget analyst. The economic development and housing position, three maintenance workers. Did I get to twenty clips? So we are running approximately, I would say, around twenty vacancies at a time that we're recruiting for.
And that's about the lowest number we've seen.
The lowest number that we've seen in a while?
Citywide.
Yes, I would say, I would say.
Because there's always going to be, there's always going to be, it's never going to be zero, right? But we're closer to zero than we have been.
Correct. We saw some retirements. You all saw them at the council meetings, some growth and development opportunities. So, but, but yes, that is, that is on the lower side in consideration of, you know, you all talked about how many positions we've, you know, been filling in the police department. Oh, we also are down, Police Record Specialist that has active recruitment. These numbers literally change every single day with moving pieces. So this is just a snapshot in time to give you, to give you a picture.
Can I just ask, so did I hear, are we fully staffed with, at our PSAP?
In, in police? No. Five officer vacancies?
No, no, PSAP are, are, tell, what you've got there, so.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Sorry. I, we are, we are fully staffed. There is a FTE request that you saw in Kristen's presentation and that would also be on the council calendar for July twenty-first.
I, I just want to take a beat and just say how amazing that is. And most of the council knows this, but maybe for council member Jack, we were down to what, two at one point?
That's correct.
So the fact that that is so well-staffed is just amazing to me. So that, that's such a win. And I say that as a person who fought super hard to keep our PSAP when the county was looking to consolidate it a number of years ago. So it's important to city functions in a bunch of ways.
Well, and I think I'd be remiss in, you know, not giving a shout out to our police communications manager, Tricia Belizy. Also our lead dispatchers right now, that's Felicia Moore. And just making sure that we are very on top of hiring and training and retention there. So they, they really get some kudos in addition to Chief Swan's, Swan's. So retention and attraction really boils down to our, our framework here and our total compensation philosophy. This is not the totality of our total compensation philosophy. It's the highlights. You know, that we want to attract, motivate and retain a diverse and high-performing workforce. And in order to do that, we have some guiding principles, but two key ones that we're looking at all the time, you know, is a total compensation package for individuals. Direct compensation such as salary and then indirect compensation includes all our benefits. We have a robust benefit package, which includes, you know, health insurance, retirement, deferred compensation and more. I also just want to point out that our total compensation philosophy, in order to be competitive, our framework is that we are at or above the median of the surrounding labor market. Our surrounding labor market is made up of those that we compete for talent with. So we have a list of really thirteen jurisdictions that we look at for most of our employee groups. Certainly with the police department and running a dispatch, we need to go, you know, dispatch, you know, nine-one-one centers that we, not, not all cities run a dispatch like us. So our, our surrounding labor market is those that we are competing for talent for. So we take really broad strokes, even though in interest arbitration eligible groups, arbiter would typically look at assessed valuation and population of a community to determine defined set. Or, you know, we're looking broad to, to be at that competitive edge. Next slide. Actually, before I move on, I, I do want to talk about the non-economic things that we're working on all the time. You know, the Employee Experience Plan is something very important to us in Isakaw. I'm really proud of the fact that, you know, aside from compensation and benefits, that we do a lot to ensure a really healthy work environment, one that people want to come to work. So we are doing things like employee survey to get feedback from staff. We do stay interviews. The philosophy there is that I'd much rather hear about what keeps you here or things that we need to improve upon rather than hearing about it as you're exiting and we're doing an exit interview. So we're doing stay interviews on a, on a consistent basis with folks. And then we also just try to do a number of events, you know, connection is really important to us. And so while we do have the benefits of telework that we do for office-based staff, that two-day-a-week requirement is meant to be to have staff connect. You all have been invited to, you know, certain events that we hold. Employee recognition is just also very important that we try to ensure that we are always looking at ways that we can recognize staff. So aside from our total compensation philosophy, you know, I, those things are certainly equally or sometimes more important than the compensation factor as well. So this slide represents just a, a picture here of some turnover data for us. So year-to-date, we've had twenty-three separations. We talked a little bit about a few of those. You know, our, our percentage in twenty twenty-four was at sixteen point two percent. Actually, unfortunately, didn't have the data pulled by the time of this slide. Our, our, our friends in Renton put this graph on the side. So I, I, I stole a bit from some data that they collected in twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. So we don't have twenty-four, but I do know our number is likely an uptick because of the layoffs that we, that we did last year. Twenty twenty-one was also a significant year for us. I made a notation there that we likely saw quite a bit of a spike because of our vaccine mandate that year. In twenty twenty-one, we started collecting data at a more granular level that's not represented here. Through exit interviews, we hold conversations to really try to get to why folks are leaving. And so we have started to tabulate data on, on what those reasons are. Is it a growth and development opportunity? We've had a fair number of people move out of state. Various reasons. We have like five or six that we are kind of slotting folks into commute, whatever it may be, personal reasons, supervisor, meaningful work, kind of your typical data points that you look, the staff look elsewhere. Not represented here, but we are analyzing that data closer. Okay, um, this is a snapshot of our five-year COLA or cost of living adjustment history. On the right side, the table you see here is just a screenshot of the Consumer Price Index Seattle Tacoma Bellevue over, over a period of ten years. So you see in twenty twenty-five, February's CPI U came in at two point five. April's CPI came in at one point seven. And then we are waiting on the June number. We are just days away from that, July fifteenth. So this next week, not to be exact, but at eight thirty AM, we will, we will know what CPI U is and that certainly helps shape our strategies for bargaining and what we're doing for staff for future years. If you do look at the left-hand side here and you look at, you know, really kind of that June column, one thing I just want to note is generally with our labor groups, we use a CPI formula. And so that's typically in our contracts, a min and a max, right, or a floor and a ceiling. So, you know, I'll use twenty twenty-three as an example. If you look at twenty twenty-three, June came in at four point six, but the COLA that we gave in the city was four because that was our ceiling in our labor agreements for the, for the four. Other years, you know, twenty twenty-two was certainly post-pandemic, you know, activity. You see ten point one. You may recall that we gave six percent, but we also gave some one-time monies versus a compounding effect. So while this represents, you know, six percent cost of living and compounding adjustment, we did give other one-time monies to equal that ten percent. You may rec. So we've tried to, you know, analyze where we can be competitive to folks, but what are the compounding effects to be able to steward our funds for the long term? Yeah, thank you.
Nice. I'm trying to understand the table. So the bi-monthly numbers that we have there, are those then annual projections of what the, the aggregate's going to be at the end of the year? Is, so for instance, let me just pick on April, pick on April twenty twenty-one. So it's three point four percent. So is that in, in April, three point four percent, we think that the aggregate or the total change in CPI for that year is going to be three point four percent and it turned out to be four point six percent?
No, we use the June to June index. So June, the June column is our, our magic number. And so even though in your twenty twenty-one example, it was three point four, we're always looking for the, the June number to dictate what the wages are for the next year.
Got it. But the, the June number is, okay, so that's the change from the previous year to this year.
Correct. Correct. So then, like even twenty twenty-four, June came in at three point eight and we, that's exactly what we gave staff is three point eight. That's why you, you are seeing a difference of where sometimes there's a floor to ceiling methodology and sometimes that, you know, ceiling that we might have, it becomes the actual because we haven't hit the ceiling. So what's next? Where are we headed? All of our collective bargaining agreements do expire at the end of this year. The exception of that is that, you know, our aid union is the first time that we have the dispatchers or the telecommunications. Good news, they voted their contract this week and that passed a yes vote. So you'll see that on the council agenda July twenty-first. You may recall, we had an executive session in early June to talk about that. And so you will, you will see that for ratification on July twenty-first. It does mean we need to start bargaining with the other seven labor groups soon because seven of them, over the course, it does take, you know, quite a bit of time to get folks to the table, hear interests and strategize around those. I mentioned already the CPI U releases Tuesday at eight thirty AM. That will help us shape our negotiation strategies. You know, because this is an open public meeting, we don't talk about those here. There's a reason we do that in executive session. But I think the one thing that, you know, we're always transparent with is our total compensation philosophy. We want to be competitive. We want to pay folks fairly. We want to attract and we want to retain. So, so that is certainly no secret here at the bargaining table. We talk a lot about our compensation philosophy in bargaining. To note that non-represented staff typically mirror the COLA of AFSMI. I will tell you that AFSMI has already approached us and asked if we'd like to consider another one-year extension. Very similar to the one-year extension that they have for twenty twenty-five, which was CPI, the three point eight, and then a couple of additional paid days off. So they're interested in memorializing an agreement. They, they are waiting till July fifteenth to, to put that in, in writing to us, but we did meet with them. I will just say that we believe most, if not all, our positions through just continuous maintenance of classifications. We believe are in line with our total compensation philosophy. We always look at a handful of job descriptions, if not all, that are represented by that bargaining group during negotiations. My team is currently doing that work to just make sure that we're in line for, you know, we look at total compensation, so base pays, add to pays, certainly in kind of the, the police realm. And then, you know, paid days off, just to make sure we're very competitive in our negotiations. And again, I just quoted here from our compensation philosophy to be competitive at or, or at or above the median of the surrounding labor market. And then also indirect compensation. So our benefits, you may recall that we went away from self-insurance a couple of years ago. Staff survey that we just had in April indicated that mostly, you know, staff are very pleased with their benefits. We offer competitive plans, very low rates, and so that's very attractive. We try to use that in our recruitment and retention strategies. And so the city does not have an interest in making any changes to those indirect benefits in twenty twenty-six. Unions? I have no idea, you know, what their interests are. Those will be the first meetings to figure out what those are. But I'm not anticipating that they're looking to seek any, any changes in, in benefits for twenty-six. You know, this piece about, you know, striving to be an employer that attracts, motivates and retains, right? I said that was the framework here. We will certainly, you know, hold negotiations that offer those competitive wages. I'm curious to hear from staff what their interests are. We have a glimpse into that from employee survey. Labor is entirely different. You know, I do know that we've done some interesting or creative, I should say, things in the police department in the last couple of years. They have an incentive on their field training because we have hired so many new officers that they have some additional time off and benefits that you all approved. So we'll be looking at analyzing that data to see how effective that was. And so listening to their interests, but certainly our goal is to continue to do the stay interviews and the employee surveys and the exit interviews. Rewarding and recognizing staff goes a long way. Like I said, there's that balance of the, the compensation pieces, but also the non-monetary things are really important as well. So we're focused on those. Certainly with our salmon values as a foundation of all of that. One thing that I certainly have an interest in is staggering our contract terms. You know, we are a, a, a small team of four in the HR department, eight contracts year over year is, is hard to achieve. And so I'm interested in seeing how we could stagger those. So we're doing, you know, two to three a year rather than, you know, eight at once. There is some benefits to, you know, an, an equity lens that we can apply as much as possible, but you can still achieve those things in staggering contract years as well.
I love what you were doing around stay interviews and retention. Because I think, I think the compensation tactic is a reason that people come to work here and a reason people stay here, but it's not the. But it's not the sole reason. Um and so I'm also struck by the primary reason people leave their jobs is because they fire their boss. And um are we doing anything in terms of supervisor, manager, leadership training to to really make sure that we we got the best leaders for the incredible staff we have?
Sure, yeah, that's a fabulous question. Um we launched our first ever required supervisor training plan this year. Um I will say um i- in total transparency, it's a little bit um compliance focused at first. Um just to get some supervisors up to speed with what we need to um from a compliance standpoint. Um but beyond that, the the idea is that we continue to groom those supervisors. Um that's certainly something that I watch for in patterns. Wally and I um in our one on ones and check ins are always talking about the reasons why, you know, folks are leaving. What can we do to help reinforce um help? Um and so we we are looking at it from a couple of different lenses.
It's awesome, thanks.
So I just have to let you know that I really was glad to hear that staggering contractors been timing them out. Because when I first read that, I thought, oh, she's going to tell us that they're asking for staggering amounts.
Yes.
I was like, I don't know.
Great, that's great.
So that could.
Good. Yeah.
Well, and I have to throw in, um as I've talked to more and more of the labor unions over the last few months. I have heard really good appreciation for how much our labor conversations and contract negotiations have improved over the last few years. So I just want to throw that out there and appreciate all of that work because I know it was very intentional.
Thank you. You know, I not to sound cliche, but to sound cliche, you know, labor relations, that that second word is really important. It comes down to relationship, right? And so um, you know, six years ago, I, you know, Wally and I talked about the fact that we had attorneys at the table and negotiating and the relationship piece what was is what was really missing. And so I, you know, it takes time. Um and it doesn't mean it's always easy. But um I think there's a mutual respect and a build of that relationship piece that has made labor um progress that way. So I'm appreciative for that, too.
And thank you for raising that because this was a big change in philosophy.
Yes.
For how the city of Issaquah dealt with this. Like it's made it a big, big because you had, you had these attorneys that that's what they did and they went from town to town. And my humble opinion did not add back. And it's been borne out that it really didn't add value. And that the value is having those longer relationships, the more consistent relationships. Um, you know, colleague to colleague period, we're all employees, we're all together in this. So you you take out the third parties, it's it's great. You know, Lauren Knox, who was with us, we won't name the city, she went to OK. You know, you know, she, you know, she really uh, you know, did did the day to day, hour to hour work. You know, Stephanie uh, you know, guiding the ship. But but Lauren really was the person that, you know, made that help, made that transition for us. So unfortunately now back, it's all back on Stephanie's shoulders. Uh but uh, well, yeah.
Staggering.
We we we, it is, but but, you know, we can't do one year for everybody. Um I think we felt that last this last twelve months was going to be a question mark. You know, I think we have a back, we have as good a sense as we're going to have for the next few years. So we might as well just go ahead and take the leap and and try to do two year agreements, three year agreements. And and I think go away one year agreements as we can. We'll see how that works.
Yeah, I had a question that maybe your Eastside Fire and Rescue person might be able to answer a little bit better. But um they're a separate entity and we're not trying to meddle with them. But um they are a significant uh element to our service for our city. Are we doing anything on that employer relationship basis for including them in the um feeling of community within our employee base in any way, shape or form? Or is it something that we might want to look to add on as another piece to our retention of employees overall? If the fire department is a little bit more of a of a contributor and a um uh integral piece of our uh employees. I I think it could increase relations both ways. So just a a thought and if you have any um comment on that.
Sure, there's certainly always, you know, opportunity to do more there. I think the the most of what I've been involved in is inviting them to our connection events. When we are doing our pumpkin derby or we do breakfast, um you know, for our award banquet, some of that. We do invite them. They do have the the staffing challenge of, you know, needing to um be in the community at that that same time and how many can come over. Um so we haven't integrated things too too much, but we certainly make a space for an invitation in some of those events.
A- and let me add that on the operational side and Chief Swan, I think you're still with us. A- again, uh we had no relationship with Eastside Fire and Rescue as far as the operation was concerned. When I, when I first arrived here, I asked Jeff Clark, uh how often did you talk to the police chief? And he said, I've talked to the police chief twice in the time that I've been here. Um and and Chief Swan, I think you can bear this out that, you know, that relationship between police and fire has completely transformed. Uh where uh the Eastside Fire and Rescue was much more like the city's fire department from an operational standpoint. Where the chiefs now have regular discussions. A fire chief comes to the weekly department director staff meeting when he can. Um, you know, Ben Chief Lane, to his credit, you know, has taken the model that we've created in Issaquah. And he's gone to the other cities in Eber to say, this is the relationship I have in Issaquah. I want to have the relationship with your jurisdiction that way. And the downside is that we see less of Ben now because he's going to all these other staff meetings and all these other communities. So um but, you know, Paul, I don't know if you want to add anything about this. We don't ever talk about this, so thank you for raising it uh about the the relationship uh between the I P D and Eber.
Yes, it's very, um we work very well together. I've done even, you know, um presentations that we videoed as far as safety talks collaboratively even to the community together. Uh we meet or if we have any questions, we contact each other. Uh we see each other at different events. Um if we ever have questions or there's something that comes up that we're both on, then we we all have worked very well together. I've had zero issues with Eastside Fire as far as that goes.
Okay, well, one of the things I would say is I appreciate you bringing that up. Because yes, it's important to have a relationship. But I think one of the areas that we experienced with the side and fire and rescue in the budget cycle was just how disconnected. The different approaches to budget were. And so I think being able to understand what that is, especially as we come in with a new chief for Eastside Fire and Rescue. Um and how we can strengthen the budgetary relationship, I think would be important there.
A- and kudos to Councilmember Hall uh for his leadership last year.
Yeah.
In starting to break down what were very, very hard silos between how Eber viewed budgeting and how especially the three large city members, Squasamish, North Bend, you budget. Um and quite honestly, they were difficult conversations that we had. Um but, you know, thanks to Councilmember Hall's leadership, kind of saying, this is kind of how we have to move forward. And um certainly as Eber has looked at what qualities they want in a new chief, you know, they went out of their way to talk to the partner agencies, the recruiters, um so that the new chief understands that, you know, the Eber board's expectation, the member city's expectation is something different. And hopefully whoever that new chief is, um I think we'll hear hear it loud and clear. So that as we're all getting together next year, it'll be a different kind of conversation than the one we had. If I, I I don't don't mean to speak for you, but I I think that's, it's an important, it's going to be an important change. We'll have to see how it works out because certainly our colleagues in Sumamish um were frustrated with last year's budget discussions. Um, you know, North Bend was a whole other issue and it was very contentious.
Fire districts were in a totally different direction.
The fire districts were in a totally different way. And and the and the discussion was because there was a differing point of view among the councilmembers in North Bend that some of them were saying, yeah, whatever Eber needs are going to get. And other councilmembers in North Bend, including their city administrators, so wait, 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 there's larger issues here. Um, yeah, so it's 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 a big deal. This is a lot of money. It's a lot of money. But thank you, Councilmember Hall. And there are two C V As still being appreciated there. So we have to wait to see that.
Must be a fun.
Okay, well, at this point, I think this is the end of this part of the presentation. We are twenty five minutes ahead. We continue to just rock it. Unfortunately, that means we don't have our food yet. So what I'd like to do, since we've all been sitting for hours and hours, is take a ten minute break and then come back and we'll start in on the presentation on the community survey. Um and then we'll probably break for food before doing our activity. Sounds good, okay, so we will be back at eleven fifteen. Back from lunch. Great opportunity to have garlic crush. Appreciate that very much. What?
Nice product, please.
Oh, yeah, hey, we got to promote our small businesses, you know? That's the way we do it. Um, okay, so next part is community survey and performance data. We've got a little bit of that and then a discussion and activity on that. Sarah, do you want to lead us off here or are you just working on the activity portion?
Oh, Peter, Peter, yeah. Well, we'll go for it. So uh I believe that uh Wally's going to give us the overview and then we'll talk about uh the activity.
So what we've done is just kind of put together a a few slides to kind of whet your appetite. Um all this is some things you have seen before. Community survey, this reminder of how we did it. Folks were generally pretty happy with uh living in Issaquah, uh the areas of opportunity, traffic, land use, planning and zoning, economic vitality, property crime response, street repair. You have seen this quadrant before and you love this quadrant. So we've given you this quadrant again and you may want to refer to it as your discussions go. Whenever I look at this quadrant, I think of Chris Ray for some reason. Chris can explain this better than I can. You want, you want to, you want to do your quadrant explanation as to?
Oh, well, I mean, the quadrant is the level I think it is so cool is it, it puts things in a two dimensional model. One where this is where the community says this is really important. And this is the the items that the the community says uh we're doing good or we have areas for improvement. And um, you know, it's a model that was really developed in the nineteen seventies by the Boston Consulting Group to help identify where to focus your attention. And so upper right hand corner, yay, keep doing it, you know, it's a good place to be. Upper left is um doing really well, um but maybe you're over delivering. Um and so if if you're looking for some areas where you can scale back, which in the past has not been a big issue, but now is. Lower right is where the focus should be. This is where we are of high importance and we're not meeting expectations. And then lower left is the things that um we can give on um in some degree. Now, when I look at the current one here for um major city services, there is really nothing in the lower left hand corner. Because all the things that are in that box are up in the uh.
Yeah.
Up in the corner of it. So I thi- think that um, yeah, anyway, that's Chris Ray's take on that chart.
Can I say, a- at the risk of 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 being complexity, I think it does need a third dimension, which is cost or magnitude. Like it it could be that, you know, you you might find that it's important to the public uh to have a Korean barbecue. And uh we might be not very satisfied about the number of Korean barbecues in town, but the ability to impact Korean barbecues versus traffic, for instance. It's a big deal, but one of those things is a lot easier.
So I think we've got the three categories. This is the major city service. Then on public safety, there's one item in that box, which means this wants to be a crime. Hey, this, we can come back if you need to. And then infrastructure, conditions of sidewalks, adequacy of street lighting in your community and street repair. So we tried to, Council President Walsh asked us to kind of dig a little deeper to see on some of these points, what other data we might have. Whether it was flow of traffic, us, this is from the performance measures, uh public save, public transit boarding per year. Speaks for himself.
I really generally liked his uh graph because it's, I did not realize we had dropped that much in uh bright shit. Uh, yeah. Yeah.
The arrows were going, they were, they weren't responding.
They're there, sorry. Uh Chris and I were talking about, you know, why, of course, this is a lot of our people working at home. Um and then not coming back to take transit. So the recovery is still going on, which is reflected in metro numbers as well, overall numbers. They're still not back to twenty nineteen appears a bright shift. So anyway, but uh I just, this is a great graph that just tells us where, if if we want to get back to nineteen, we have to work quite a bit harder.
Well, and I think toward that point, eh, you know, you indicated there could be several reasons why people aren't boarding public transit. But one of them that I think we should know about is what our transit service, you know, maybe frequency and number of lines and all of that was in twenty nineteen compared to now. Because we know we've seen a lot of cuts. Um but if those cuts aren't proportional to the amount of draft, you know, what other influence pieces we might have.
And at E P P, uh and Kelly was there as well, at E P P on Friday, we got a preview of improvements. And we're going to beginning some improved transit uh at the next uh transit change. So so hopefully that will help because they'll have more destinations.
All right, good. More flow of traffic data.
I wonder, do we have any data on nine hundred? Because that's the other area where we see large differences in travel time depending.
I did, I did.
On nine hundred, going down to Talis. You know, because if we're looking at areas, I I think one of the things I would say, looking at all of these, is there's a much closer ratio eastbound, westbound areas where there isn't as much of a differential between the two of those compared to the differential that we see on the north southbound, which indicates more of that traffic going north, southbound. So it'd be nice to see nine hundred as well, to see if that continues that same trend or that same differential that shows, oh, the southbound is really, southbound evening is really the biggest issue that we're having.
I'll see what we can find. Land use, uh again, trying to get a little bit uh more data on the table. Number of weeks it takes C P D staff to conduct a successful first review of permits. Get down twenty four than what it had been. There still was wild pervasive perception that process is broken. It's frustrating for staff to establish the data points, see improvement.
Does you also show?
I'm sorry?
Does this show improvement?
Uh from four weeks, from six weeks and eight weeks to four weeks and six weeks. Wally, one of the things you might want to do, if these numbers are not based on the new um report that came out from Commerce on fifty two ninety, it broke it out by city and Issaquah's numbers, it's pretty good. It could be another data point that you can use. I, again, I think we're dealing with perception versus reality. And I think the large turnover planning staff, one of the benefits is going to be to help some of that perception piece. And I think the large turnover of planning staff, one of the benefits is gonna be to help some of that perception piece.
One of the great things you can do though is compare Isqwa's numbers versus your peers and have a real kind of numbers to numbers. You know, picture that people can look at and see how Isqwa is doing. And I think you'll find the picture pretty favorable.
More land use, farmers' measures. Still not. Weeks to take C P D staff to conduct successful first review of permits. Still over on single family eating. Housing units by type.
I don't understand how triplex, fourplex and duplex go down.
I had the same question.
The only way that would be is if a bunch of them were torn down, but. Yeah. So maybe we can get some more information about that. But I think the larger picture there that we are seeing is, yes, we are trending upward in housing. And more of it is multifamily in recent years than single family.
You know, what's interesting about that is I wonder if the duplex, triplex, it's a reclassification problem. And so we're really maybe not trending up. And the reason we're seeing the uptick is because we've reclassified duplexes and triplexes.
No, we didn't reclassify them as multifamily. We, what did we?
This year, we reclassified them as middle housing, but it could have been in these previous years that they were.
Yeah, it's interesting to dig into why that number.
Yeah, cause even multifamily goes up, down, up, up.
Yeah, it would be good to get an explanation.
I'll, I'll just point out that if you, if you had, if the X axis was years, right? You would see what we all think, we all said in our comments this morning, which is since COVID, everything has slowed down, right? Like, by going straight from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four, you sort of miss that message. But like, you know, there's a lot more, a lot more housing got created between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty one. It got created between twenty twenty one and twenty twenty four in same units.
Um, that can like vitality.
Businesses supported with startup, we did a lot during the COVID years of making sure that we were touching each of the businesses. And we have a target of thirty.
For twenty twenty, they must be, have been doing a lot on soon.
Sorry, whatever.
Is this really suggesting that fifty percent of people both work and live in Isqwa? That doesn't check. Maybe if you were counting people that work from home.
Yeah, I don't think it's like. Yeah, but it's total residents. So kids that go to school here live and work in Isqwa technically. It's not people that are of job age or working age that are in now. Necessarily, that may be some of the story.
Okay, we need more information on this slide too.
Yet still, the trend line is interesting.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to know what is trending, but.
So those slides we put together again, just to kind of whet your appetite.
I know what I was thinking was people working from home.
So our goal over the next bit of time is really we wanted to dig into, and maybe you can go back to the slide that shows the major city services. Those three city services that have high importance, low satisfaction. They're difficult areas. And so we wanted to approach this two ways. First of all, we wanna get a sense of, do we agree or have consensus over what those things mean? What is the problem that the community is trying to tell us about? Um, in each of those areas. And then secondarily, after we have that conversation, we wanna go around and put up some ideas, policies, concepts, approaches, crazy thoughts on what we could do to move the needle in each of these areas. Because it's one thing to talk about, you know, big projects or, you know, some of the other things that we've been talking about today. But the community has indicated that these are very big areas. And so we wanna kind of see if we can come up with, how do we wanna approach these in the next year, two years? So, starting out.
People to take notes?
Yeah, probably be a good idea.
Are we not having a position to take?
Yeah, oh. Yes, they're actually underneath the poster. And do you want a clean sheet, councilmember? So Barb, there were kind of three questions that we had asked everybody. Um, what are your takeaways? Were there any notable trends? And then how on the community survey, is there anything big maybe that you saw here? Are there any new insights?
Yeah, no, I had some thoughts this week going back through the community survey result. Couple of things that have already kind of been reiterated and we talked about when we first, uh, got the report was like, once again, people are very happy here. I think something genuinely to feel very proud of, and I hope that staff uh, across all the different sectors of the city see themselves in that ninety six percent metric. Like, that's really good. So I really look basically, they're contributing to residents loving living here, which is good. Uh, for the most part, seeing a lot of the same things show up as usual in terms of traffic, property crime. Um, sidewalks, road condition that we would normally see. Um, there are, I noticed a handful of things where people are satisfied, but still want continued emphasis. Which tells me that these things are so important to people that regardless of how good we're doing, how well we're doing, we should always prioritize these things. Those ones were availability of sidewalks, paths, walking trails, overall built environment of Isqwa, the quality and the access to natural environment in Isqwa, quality of local government services and the overall feeling of safety in Isqwa. So these were things where people said, you're doing a good job, but we want you to keep it up.
Wally, could you put it, um, so that we can see Councilmember Jane, just in case she has comments, we're having more discussion.
Another thing, um, from my reactions when we first saw the survey was people emphasized sidewalk and road conditions quite a bit. And we had just made some cuts, um, to our pavement and management, our pavement and concrete management. So after years of bracketed, wrapped best in those programs. So I think it tells me something obvious there that these things are very visible. Like, when you're driving over a pub, well, that's a very visible government interaction between residents and government. But the fixes aren't always necessarily as visible as the problem. So it, to me, this kind of means that we should always be prioritizing this kind of maintenance. So it's never so visible that it becomes a pain point and then shows up in the community survey like this. So I just thought that was kind of interesting, especially as we're heading into mid buy. Not that we have a full lot of, um, ability to invest, um, at the same record levels. But perhaps it's, and we wanna have a point in conversation about. Um, and then, you know, another big thing that like jumped out at me, of course, was cost, which continues to be a major, um, concern. Um, I think, you know, I was thinking a lot about this this weekend. I think what it comes down to is that right now residents are paying a lot, right? They're paying a lot taxes, they're paying a lot at the pump, at the grocery store. And or that you don't always necessarily see that kind of like big transformative changes that you might expect in your community, right? Uh, in the grand scheme of things, very little comes back into Isqwa for investment, given your, your entire, your entire tax pod. Um, but, you know, you look around yourself to see impact. I mean, that's just kind of natural to look around you and see, okay, what, what is, what am I really getting for, for the cost here? So this makes me think a lot too about Councilmember Marks. Him and I, we were on the Capital Finance Community Task Force. We were talking about essentially like the balance between big, major transformative projects versus many but smaller projects around town and kind of what's the balance there and how that group kind of ended up recommending and saying that people like to see big changes. And so you know, we've talked about as a councilor for Snacks Road, like that's a big, major project when we're talking about the C I P. And I just wanted to kind of throw that out there as something we think about going into maybe the next biennial too. Is that people look around themselves or look in their local communities and they say, what kind of impact am I getting for the dollar here? And I think value for, for taxes was something that showed up as a priority in the community survey as well. So something to just kind of be chewing on. Um, another thing that I just, I was so confused about, and I was wondering if maybe we could just like follow your Thomas. But there was only a sixty six percent satisfaction rating for accuracy of information provided by the city. What do you think that's like? Why would people be having vibes with like what? How accurate we are, or maybe it's more around, and this is maybe something to just get their feedback on. Maybe it's more about accuracy of information that exists in the community around things. So, cause sometimes when they're not hearing, if they don't have the newsletters, they'll turn to a Facebook group and that's just like, you know, or something like that. And so then that changes their interaction next time to trust that source. But anyways, just got me thinking about how can we make sure continuing to put, um, the communications thing that you're talking about earlier, make sure.
That's information. Um, I think it's kind of interesting because maybe it's not accuracy of information as it is, uh, trust in what the city says. Which is a little different than accuracy of information. It's belief that, um, I'm getting the straight scoop from people at the city. And, and I think that's a significant issue. People should have faith that the city is a, a good broker, is a, a fair partner, is telling the truth. And I, I reckon, I put some of that to people don't necessarily, uh, trust what they're hearing.
You're right, that is kind of slightly different. And it's like, then how are we continuing to build relationship with community and trust? Yeah, absolutely. Anyways, those were some of my high level things beyond the land use, traffic things.
Um, anybody else on any kind of what they were, their key takeaways? I'll just, um, add, you know, the things that I wrote down are that, again, people are who have been able to live here are very happy with their quality of life. Yeah, so that is something important for us to recognize. Um, that being said, some of the things that I see on this, uh, that are worth highlighting over the last several surveys is how much residents are fed up with traffic congestion now that return to office is in force. Um, when we look at that, people were happier with traffic, when flow of traffic when there weren't as many vehicles on the roadway commuting at the same times. Um, and so I think we can directly attribute the decrease in satisfaction in those areas to, um, people returning to office, the fact that, that congestion has changed. And it's very visible because both people experience it every day and because it's very different from just a few years ago, when it was easier to get around town. Um, and then the other thing that I think people are seeing much more visibly is just how astronomical housing prices and stuff are. Um, and that was something I was struck with on this survey was just how much more that is in the public realm. And I think we are seeing more of that here because we have almost a fifty fifty split between renters and homeowners. And while homeowners aren't as affected by that, except ones who recently purchased or are trying to change. Um, renters are always impacted by the housing crisis. And so I think as we have more and more renters, we will start to see that more and more as something coming up in our survey. Councilmember Joe, you're looking confused by what I've said.
I'm a renter, so I'm just trying to figure that out. My rents not changed too much over the last two years, but perhaps not, but high costs are coming soon. So, thank you.
Barb, you wanted to throw something in?
So the land use planning and zoning comments, because that's pretty I don't know, was that the choice on the survey or was that worrying that actually came from the community? Cause this sort of surprised me. Uh, I know there was a subject there of rural housing. What did the change mean by that?
And I will note that question has been asked multiple years in a row with the same wording there. And we have, you know, there is some interest in keeping the questions the same so that you can see trends. But each time over the survey, since I've been on council, we've asked, what does that mean to the community? Because they could be interpreting it in many, many ways. But so we'll get into that.
I'll just put that, worrying, wording to me does not give us a lot of.
Yeah. Um, anybody else wanna throw in?
I imagine Wally is from the developer that made survey too.
Sure, it's a generic term.
Yeah.
And in some places, it's more easily understood than others. You've got sprawl, you have lots of new commercial developments. And then that's, I think, what the term is meant to cap, which isn't necessarily as relevant for us in our circumstances.
But it is interesting when any individual fills out this survey and they are looking at every question through their own personal lens, answering it through that lens. And we don't know what that's, and so I kind of like your next agenda.
Yeah. Uh, Councilmember Jane, do you have any comments on, on what was this, any takeaways from the community survey?
I mean, similar to what everyone else said, you know, traffic continues to be a huge concern for everyone. And I think, I probably mentioned this when we spoke about it in a council meeting, but reading, you know, the written comments was also very informative. Um, especially, you know, people saying there's no serious plan to address traffic other than hoping that Highway eighteen will solve all of our problems when it's finished in ten years. And I think that's a concern that we have to take seriously because I don't think the average person actually believes that Highway eighteen is gonna solve traffic in downtown Isqwa. And so we need to figure out what are some other solutions. Um, it could even just be, it, and it could even be like land use things, you know, one of the complaints we hear about in Old Town is there's no grocery store near me, so I have to drive, but I can't drive because the traffic is so bad. And so I think we need to look into, you know, what are ways that we can make it so that people don't have to get into their cars for taking trips that they need to do in their everyday life so that they don't have to get stuck in traffic. And also look into, you know, non-driving alternatives for said traffic.
Yeah, I will also throw in, one of the things I noticed, yeah, one sec, uh, Air Poly, I see your hand up. Um, is just the number of comments there were about traffic being related to school overcrowding. Um, it was very interesting to see how connected that was in people's minds. It wasn't just, oh, we have a lot of school traffic. It was, our school is overcrowded. And so we have more. And so we have more traffic than was designated for that area. Uh, Mayor Poll.
I think I have a good connection, but just two, two high level thoughts. Um, one, I think the point that Councilmember Jane just meant that. If the messaging out to the community is Highway eighteen is going to solve our problems, that's a very unsatisfactory one. We have to be able to chew gum and walk at the same time. And so we need to tell the community about the other things. That are within our control as a municipality that we can do, and we want to see Highway eighteen finished. It's kind of an and, not a nor. And the second thing is, uh, this is kind of a, a. Plus one on what Councilmember Martz said about the third dimension of the graphic. That is, uh, we can put a lot of attention on things where we only have one string to pull. But there are other things that our community has set our priorities where we can pull all the strings. It's all about what we can do and what we can deliver. And I think that is.
It's all about. No, it's all outside entirely.
Um, I was just saying, uh, I did agree with Councilmember Martz that there needs to be a dimension of, and what is it that we can do? Um, solving community hunger is not something we'd be able to pull the biggest string on or in many strings at all. Um, but a transportation project, a concern about congestion, those are all in our house basically. So. Anyway, those are the two high level thoughts, but I, I think the insights are fascinating. Everybody's pulling out different things and they're all. They're all top notch. They're all very, very important. So thanks.
Um, yeah, go ahead.
One of the things that, that I noted is some of these things council doesn't have a direct impact on in the next six months or a year. But the economic vitality or um, uh, economic development. That's in the um, lower quadrant, but needs continued emphasis is something we, we can work on. Uh, and it uh, uh, does involve making sure that we're doing the right kinds of things with LTAC. It involves making sure that we're doing the right things for permitting new businesses and um, you know, making sure the business environment is. Friendly to new people coming in and. Making sure that we're nurturing and keeping the businesses that we have. It's more expensive to bring a new business in than to, than to nurture and keep the business that you have there. So. Um, we, we do have a healthy balance between sales tax and property tax because we have a good retail environment. Are there things that we need to emphasize and look at and, and, and focus on? As a council from a policy point of view that might help continue to keep that vitality there and bring new businesses in?
And, yeah.
I, um, this is my, my phrase of the day, which is you can't have a walkable city unless you have someplace to walk to. And that goes to um, Councilmember Joe and economic vitality. We can talk all we want about identity and making a walkable city. And biking and getting around, but there's a circle in which I will do that. Um, and so we have to make sure that we have destinations within that circle around our, our. Residential communities or we will never achieve anything like we want with walkability or bikeability or. Or any of those abilities.
Okay, so you need somewhere, you need somewhere to walk to, are you talking about business community, small?
I think it's, 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 so it's, it's retail. So I, it's, it's the fact that we don't have a grocery store. Kind of viable path. So I can't walk to a grocery store, so I gotta get in the car. It's uh, having a restaurant um, within, you know, a fifteen minute walk and so I can walk to dinner instead of getting in my car. My car. It's about having a nail salon, so I don't have to drive to my nail salon. So there's all those kind of consumer things. But if we're also ever going to get uh, Councilmember Martz's vision of people living and working, we also have to attract. Businesses that are not retail businesses um, that are walkable from our. Our residential areas, or we're just going to be getting their cars, because that's what we do. So, I'm just trying to, you know, we can talk about. The residential side of this equation, but if we don't talk about where those people are going to get the services that they want, then we're going to create incredible congestion and more traffic. So we gotta do, but it's a two per.
Good work play.
Learn.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Okay, um, the. So the other questions were, were there any notable trends, changes, or surprises? You know, I think we have covered some of that in the aspect of.
Saw the light go up and down, no?
That helps, so I gotta just take the cover on it.
Oh, apologies.
We just muted you. You're good, you're good. Um, but were there any notable trends, anything that anybody wanted to bring up?
I think we've already all noted that the affordable housing seems to be cutting up. In public. It's getting torn more to the top of people.
Um, also, I can't remember if this was something we identified in the last meeting with this, but didn't street lighting kind of come out of nowhere? It's this issue that's risen to a much bigger concern than previous years. Is that something?
I think much bigger is a relative term.
Well, yeah, relative to it not showing up, it needs emphasis.
Yeah.
I would just point out that if you look at um, um, the. Trash recycling yard waste services, um, that's in the left column and uh. Is, is a, a pretty uh, Sash Factory score and uh, attribute that to. The new contract and the education we did around that contract, having bringing Sam in as the, the coordinator for that contract was very helpful. I just want to compliment the administration for addressing those issues. Yes, they're going to be the one offs where garbage gets missed. We see those. But to see a, a decent score on the survey, I think says a lot about the way that we have responded, reacted and, and done positive things. In that service area. So thank you, Wally. Thank you to the city.
That's a very good point. Yes, great lighting.
I think the number one challenge with street lighting is maintenance.
Yeah.
It's not the light, it's not that we need more lights, it's that we need to trim the trees around the lights.
Yeah.
Well, there are certain neighborhoods that don't have any lighting. And in some cases they light up or we want more, you know, to keep it less lit. But because of the water areas, but in other areas, I think they could benefit from and would appreciate. More lighting.
I think that's really important. I was thinking, yeah, most of Squawk, people like living in the forest.
Yeah.
We're not looking to let.
Yeah, yeah, but Old Town.
Yeah.
Might be like, oh, we could really use lights and sidewalks and such, so. Yeah, that's one area where I don't have a problem having different standards for different neighborhoods. Because there are different desires in that area. Yeah, um, one thing I was hoping to see improvement on in the survey result was ease of. Because we spent so much time doing uh, changes in Title eighteen. And one of the outcomes we were looking on that was. Better satisfaction with our permitting. And so the fact that we did not see an improvement there. Um, indicates to me that the changes we made did not satisfy the people who care about. Um. I don't think it's too early. Um, because we've had those changes in place for over a year.
In, in my experience professionally, if you have one bad experience of permitting, you're going to tell people about it for years.
Yeah.
And so I think part of it is, probably is a little early because. Not everyone has an experience every day.
Certainly.
So, um, you know, I, I think it's our number one challenge with, is perception. Versus reality. We've talked even this morning about sharing data, sharing the statewide collected data which shows. That we're better than most. Uh, but the perception is so deep seated because if you have a bad experience, you tell all your friends. And then there are people who have poor expectations of what even a good experience should be. And for those, you know, we think it's a good experience, but they still think it's bad. Because we sent back permit for another question, why is this taking so long? It should be twenty-four hours. Where I will never be back. So. You know, the administration hears everybody about this and it's an ongoing struggle. Um, you know, the planning changes are going to help. Because I think some of the challenge we had um, was long time planners who. Started working for us with a mindset that the permit will get done when I say the permit will get done. And we were going to have new people who will have a different mindset.
Yeah. I think it's just important to recognize what outcomes we were trying to achieve and we only get data every two years. Um, in some of these cases. And so having um, that is important. Um, anything else on notable trends, changes, or surprises? And then the last question was, how do the survey results align or not align with your own perceptions or experiences as a council?
As a council member or resident?
Um, as, as a council member or resident. Yeah, I think one of the things I just noted down there is that as a homeowner, it is really important to pay attention to the. Cost of living areas because my mortgage from back in twenty seventeen. Um. Even earlier than that is a lot different from somebody experiencing getting a mortgage or rent now. And so it's just very, very important to have these, that set of data um, to connect to the. Anything else in this area? Okay. So, lots of key takeaways on, people are happy, but we're highlighting some areas that are. Both notable changes, um. Areas where maybe the relationship to government is very visible. Um, and so they are noting it further. Experiences with costs and traffic congestion um, came up multiple times. Yeah. Okay, so. The next point of all of this is really to dig down into these three areas that were indicated as. High importance, low satisfaction and see if we can come up with a. An understanding of what we think residents mean. And part of that may be, hey, we don't know enough. We need to take this to. A border commission, or we need to do an online survey, or we think this could be two things. Um, depending on who the resident is. So. I think flow of traffic is probably an area where we will have more. Does anybody want to talk about what they think that means?
I think we can uh, use a reader board that we're considering for emergency events. To give people an idea of how long it's going to take. If you get off at um, Front Street, how long is it going to take you to get through the city? You know, if we have six minutes up there, then people know it's, it's relatively quick. They can make that decision if it's thirty-six minutes. They can make another decision in terms of the route.
Um, before you go on, I don't want to brainstorm answers yet. That's going to come with this, but I think. Before we can brainstorm answers, I want everybody to have a chance to define. What is the problem that people are experiencing with flow of traffic?
So the problem with the flow, it's the uncertainty in terms of the time it's going to take you to get from point A to point B. And the city is able to give better information about there, it could help the issue.
Okay, so we're hearing uncertainty and lack of information. Okay. I would say, oh, you got it? Go for it. Now, I think the biggest issue there is north-south traffic. I don't think people experience as much traffic on the east-west area. And so I would say the inability to get through town. Not necessarily to go past town, but because our north-south routes either affect. The ability to get to Talis or the downtown area. I think those are key areas that. Um, people are experiencing congestion.
Starting from on this page, what we're going to do is identify the big issues. So leave spaces and then we'll fill in with solution. Okay, so just so you know what I'm doing here.
Yep.
I was going to say something really similar. Um, you know, in kind of approaching the definition problem, I was like, okay. I'm not a council member, I'm taking the survey. It does look traffic being to me, I, I think. As a council member, I would like to think it means, oh, getting around town by car, bus, bike, or foot are, are all safe. Be quick and easy. Uh, but I think for the most part, the average uh, consumer responder of this survey is saying. How quickly and predictably, to your point, can I get around town in my car without hitting too much traffic? I think that's like kind of the general mindset that's, um, taking the survey feels. And so I think part of. The flow of traffic issue is, and we've talked about this for years, want, and you, you just mentioned it, we want to prioritize movement around town. Over movement through it. But the circulators, the streets that we use to go around town are also the streets that people use to go through it. Like, I think you're right about the east-west part being, being okay. Like usually, not now when there's a lot of construction going on in Newport. It's totally fine on the other side of I ninety for Newport, unless something's happened and now everyone's trying to get on the Newport to get to nine hundred. Um, but the streets that you then use, like Newport going down across nine hundred then become. How people are funneling on the front street because they don't want to wait on I ninety to get off I ninety on the front streets. We're using the same streets. Anyways, yeah, that's part of the issue is kind of the same, the routes that we want. Uh, for inner city um, transportation are kind of the same as the interest. What would you? Oh, well, yeah, the flow of um, traffic, I mean, I guess, just to revamp it for that, then it's like. Ability to get around town is just as difficult to get through town because you're relying on the same.
Yeah.
Inter should be easier than inter or uh, inter.
Inter.
In, intra, intra should be easier than inter, yeah.
Uh, we've got, uh, Councilmember Jane?
Yeah, so just from talking to voters, it's been interesting to hear. Like where the people live that have the most issues with traffic. For example, you hear a lot of your complaints. About traffic from people that live in the Highlands because they're not on nine hundred or Front Street. Whereas people in, in Old Town, that's like their number one concern. People in Talis, number one concern. And so I think it's very clear that, I mean. You know, for example, one of my neighbors um, works at Redmond High School. And she said sometimes it takes her thirty minutes to get from East Lake, you know, Lakes State Park to Talis. She predicts that it will take thirty minutes every time, but it sucks because there is no other way to go.
We lost you after thirty minutes every time.
Yeah, so.
It's us, not you, but just letting you know when you. Okay, you're back.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, so I think it's not just the predictability of the flow of traffic, it's the fact that. It is a predict, it's predictably bad every time for hours. And so I think, you know, people, people know that traffic is going to be bad and sometimes you really, you know, you can't necessarily. Structure your whole life around avoiding traffic. Um, we've also looked into, you know, some of the traffic data and something like eighty percent of the traffic on Front Street during rush hour is. Pass-through traffic. And I think that's something that frustrates a lot of people because, I mean, anecdotally, that seems true. It's just like people going, you know. Through Isqwa, even like I've seen random comments on Reddit of people just saying that. Get waiting in the exit traffic at exit twenty-five to get on Highway eighteen is so soul sucking, sucking that they would rather go through Front Street. Because at least even if you're moving at five miles an hour, you're still moving.
Soul sucking that they would rather go through is the cause. Sorry, Kelly, it really isn't you. It's us. It's our internet keeps dropping us off.
Oh, no. Sorry. Okay, I'm back. Yes. Traffic is soul sucking.
Last one.
And so I think, I think the elements of traffic is the amount of pass through traffic that we get specifically going north to south. And there are specific neighborhoods that are more affected by that, so. Yeah.
Can we combine those or is that?
Pass through traffic, yeah. Yep.
What I love about this conversation is it's really helped us, I think, put a pretty fine point on what people meant mean by flow of traffic. And the real problem isn't flow of traffic globally. It really is the soul sucking part of flow of traffic is the north south, particularly during the rush hours.
Yeah.
And, and so I'm, I kind of like that discussion because maybe that's where the focus needs to be, not on just, you know, the larger context, which is, could be distracted. But if, you know, if there's anything, and, and then the total part point, that's also big on the cost dimension, so.
Yeah.
But, you know, that, but I think that's the, that's the negative.
So one of the things about this community is that there, there are historical ghosts that flit around the road. When issues come up that newer arrivals to the community don't necessarily know. So on the school system, it's the two thousand three strike, right? And many things about the district can be explained in, in understanding that strike in the aftermath. The bypass, right?
Yeah.
Twenty years ago, fifteen years ago, we had an extraordinarily contentious debate about a bypass and decided not to put the bypass in place. We've never come up with the alternative to the bypass, right? We, we said, okay, we're not going to do the bypass array. And then we never figured out something else to deal with that. And so that north south traffic thing is, we made a conscious decision and then never fixed it. And in some ways, it kind of reminds me of the sidewalks going out to South Coast, right? Like you make a decision and then it takes, you know, you, you say, okay, well, we're going to do a certain thing and then it takes decades to address it. We've never addressed ourselves in a way, either intra or inter, right? So, so that conversation is long overdue.
So do we think?
Uh, it's, it's really a plus one to that north south is, is the fundamental issue and that it's, it's a problem that we have kicked down the road for over fifteen years.
So just to kind of not play devil's advocate, but throw out any other ideas to make sure that we're coming to consensus on this. I haven't heard anybody say transit, haven't heard anybody say biking or walking. So we aren't experiencing those necessarily as what the community is saying. You can add transit, but I don't think that's something that you are hearing. That might be something that is a potential solution. But when we're defining the problem, what we are hearing is north south traffic is bad. In some cases, there is a lack of predictability or it's so much greater in the evenings than in the morning that people experience that as a bad. They also know it's going to be long on these north south areas. So people are either avoiding or they're just experiencing the soul sucking nature of it. It is as hard to get around within the city as it is to get through the city because the same routes are being used. The one thing I would say is, are we having at all a difference in perception versus experience? Because as we've talked about, in some cases, if the perception is, it's just really hard to driver. Well, one of the perceptions people often have is parking is really difficult in downtown Iscoa. But we've done the studies, we've shown, you know, it's much easier to park in Iscoa than it is in Seattle. You might have to walk a block, but people's perception is they should be able to park right in front of a place. So I wonder. And I think Mayor Polly?
I agree with everything. Just a couple of points to add. The reason the traffic in the morning is not as bad as the traffic in the afternoon is because one funnel is leading into three outlets. And so you don't feel it, the backup is down on high Iscoa Hobart Road, which backs up seven miles now, which never used to happen twenty five years ago. So there are some external forces and I think having a future conversation about where we can influence extra choices on external projects versus where we can construct projects within our own community. Whether it's making one way streets or whatever it is, would be helpful because they're two separate things and they're funded entirely different. I think the other part about the walking, biking that I want to make sure we're all clear on is that for those of us that live here year round, nine months of it rains, walking and biking is not necessary. We are not, you know, tough enough in our community for even to have our kids walk in the rain sometimes. So while we need robust walking and biking, it's very likely that it will never replace a hundred percent of your local duties because we just don't bike and walk in the rain. You don't see anybody outside on a, on a rainy day most of the time. And so we're always going to have to move on those streets and it's a matter of what choices are you going to make to do it? Is there a local option for transit that isn't called transit? So it doesn't get us in trouble? Is there a local option for a streetcar that moves around on a triangle on the floor that doesn't conflict with metro? More EVs, great. But busing, we don't control, light rail, we don't control. So I think there's a, probably like you guys have just talked about four different conversations about the same topic that you could have in the future. So I just wanted to throw those thoughts in.
Thank you. Sounds good, Merz.
Well, it's, I, it's maybe a sidebar. Yeah. Yeah. It's a sidebar.
I was just adding to this perception versus reality because I got on Front Street the other day and I thought I'm going to be sitting here forever and I actually clocked it and everything. So, you know, sometimes is eight minutes really? But for me, I was thinking it was going to be twenty minutes, so.
Do we think that goes down to predictability?
Uh, could be, yeah, that could be part of it.
Yeah.
Check it out.
Yeah.
So on your, on your point about perception versus reality, my perception is the traffic was worse pre COVID. I had, I had committee meetings, I had a committee meeting once and I had to get from Home Depot to City Hall. And I left at five o'clock and I got there at six fifteen and it was a mile and a half. And I've never experienced anything like that. It, it can be hard to get to our E for meetings, but it doesn't, doesn't take an hour and fifteen minutes to get a mile and a half. So we need hard data. I will note that, who's our old traffic guy, Torson? Was it Torson?
Yeah. I think so.
Yeah, I didn't see the presentation on times, on network times and, you know, here's three things we're going to do this year. And now here's what those network times are. Here's how the intersections go from D to C or C to D or C to F or whatever. I haven't seen a presentation on traffic quite some time. So hard data, this is all to say, I agree with this idea that we need more hard data about how traffic is working. Because I don't think it's as bad as it used to be.
Our statistics tell us that a lot of people so it's got to have been some in that number of vehicles on the road, even at some hour. Although I have to say lately, Front Street is backed up.
And nine hundred is always there.
Yeah. So total brings up, Councilmember Merz, brings up a really interesting thing, just building on the perception. If I have one bad experience, I will never let go of that. It's always that experience and so it's the bad permit, it's the bad whatever. So it's how do we either tune out those, that noise and say, okay, what's the real baseline here? And, and recognize that we'll never address all the perception problems? Or how do we address perceptions? And that's hard because I will never let go of the hour and a half to go a mile and a half. So there's something for us to keep in mind when we're talking about how to solve some of this stuff. Some of it's unsolvable because it exists in Noah's mind.
So I think we're going to say that maybe we have some consensus and agreement on what the problem is with traffic and the flow of traffic area. So for the solutions, we'll probably take those sheets off and put them off to the side because I want the council members to write out the solutions. So we'll move on to land use planning and zoning. The concept here is what the heck does the community mean for this? Because there are a lot of ways that this could be interpreted. So does anybody want to throw something out there? What does the community mean when they are dissatisfied with land use planning and zoning? Councilmember Ray?
I don't think that there is anything the community means. I think that's the underlying problem. I think it's everything from, you know, I moved to the suburbs, I want a suburban land use code and you're giving me identity five over ones, all the way to I, I want to see more urban setting. And it's a disconnect between kind of all of the above. And I think it reflects the fact that we're a community in transition. You know, that we are, you know, for a long time, we were a suburban veteran community that is, is transitioning. And I don't know that our, our community is a hundred percent aligned on it. And, and I don't know that it's possible to get them a hundred percent aligned.
Yeah, I would say Bellview is experiencing much of the same in seeing big growth by people in the more suburban HOA neighborhoods really experiencing it. So it isn't just a, you know, forty two thousand person Iscoa that is in that transition and difference of understanding of our city. Yeah.
So what I hear is the traffic is terrible and you're building all these houses and so you've got no plan. That's kind of the general thing I hear. Why are we building more when the traffic's so bad? Which, and traffic being a separate issue in some ways, but people say it's all related that we are not. They don't think we plan.
So it used to be, uh, back way back in the day before zoning, when new neighbors were added, they brought with them new skills and experiences and businesses and things like that that added to people's lives when they got a new neighbor. Now we experience getting a new neighbor as just the downsides of traffic. Of more people overcrowding the schools, of people having a difficult time being able to get to their local stores. Yeah.
I think Councilmember Ray and De Michelle hit this perfectly. This is how I was thinking about it too, and this has been a question mark that you alluded to for such a long time for us. I think when it comes to like land use and zoning, these are very complicated and not very well understood, but when, when people see the word planning, in my mind, like I feel like prevailing feedback of like, at least in my experience, like eight years of being out on like doors, talking to people on council has always been, why isn't the infrastructure in place before housing comes? Why doesn't growth, you know, these kinds of things? Why does housing come and then you go to like, like these kinds of like prevailing feedback that we get from people? I do think to Councilmember Ray's point now that we are seeing this evolve a little bit in our communities. People want to see a variety of housing types in a variety of areas around town and variety of housing and affordable house. Those, those two topics do consistently show up in our community survey as various purposes. So I look at like the middle housing work we're doing, the I H I work we're doing, the title eighteen, title sixteen work we're doing. And I see alignment with what community wants to see, but these things take time. And so a lot of this, maybe there is some perception element to this as well too. But another part is also just time for this transition of thought to take place in community and for people to see a kind of variety of house, variety of, of uses, including business, show up. So those are some of my thoughts.
So with the, with the very large exception of traffic, so set aside traffic for a second. The rest of this land use planning and zoning, I file firmly under the other cities would love to have the problems that we have. Because if, if you think that our community's concern around land use planning is the size of a red box, right? In places like Shoreline, it's the size of an SUV, right? It is single family homes being ripped out and being replaced by multifamily homes in communities, fundamental transformation of existing residential communities. We're not doing that, right? We have a valley floor, the growth that we have seen over the last fifteen years, post urban villages has all been in, has essentially all been in the valley. Uh, and it's been taking, it's been reusing spaces that are down there. So that's not to say this isn't important. And like I said, I, 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 at the beginning of this rant, I accepted the traffic, right? The traffic is clearly, people are mad and, and view that we have not managed our growth effectively. But the rest of it is, I think, less critical than some of the other things we're talking about here today. Because we have a valley and because we continue to fill in the valley. But I have friends in Shoreline that are progressive and, and believe in investment and they go nuclear when you talk about urban, or I talk about land use. Because they've seen their neighborhoods fundamentally transformed by, by the, by the, by the densification. So we are very, very lucky stopping. Excepting that.
Even just up the hill, people.
In Spanish, yeah, yeah. So you're suggesting this is a problem for Iscoa and as much as it is in the importance dissatisfaction, it's not nuclear.
The traffic piece is, is a super huge big deal, but beyond traffic, I think it's, it's less critical than some of the other things we're talking about.
And I'm going to kind of de-prioritize this one a little bit too. Because I think it is a poor wax and a dessert topic and anything else you want to put on it. So it, it became a lightning rod for dissatisfaction. You know? So I think when I was just, if I am dissatisfied with anything and I see a question about land use, planning and zoning, I'm going, I'm not happy and it's, you know, and it's super important. Because it's, it's so ambiguous if you're not in the game. So.
So let me ask the question, do we feel like this question needs to change in the future?
Or, or you just do what your colleagues have said, that is take with a grain of salt?
I, I think it would just be fascinating to do a survey of what, you know, and I don't know if you get anybody to do this, but to, to do the questions we're doing right now, what if people, what if, when you responded to land use, planning and zoning, what were you thinking? You know? Because it's, they're very broad.
I would like to just commend Councilmember Ray for his SNL reference from a nineteen seventy six episode. Just, I just love it. Clearly we all missed it.
Poor lax and dessert topping.
Uh.
A few of it.
Yeah.
You always stick up on those.
Yeah, you do.
It's, it's almost as impressive an air of a certain.
Okay, so.
I think I have it out here and I agree with, with Paul on the same. People would love to have a promise, we haven't seen any need to destroy any of its. And this is not happening now, five to ten years down the road, but at some point, the school district is going to run into this problem. Because there is not land for schools, you know, and because of the urban growth boundary, they're stuck here. And so somewhere along the line, not our problem, it's the school district's problem, but I just want to bring it up that that's going to happen. I'm pretty sure.
It'll be in the domain.
Five, ten years.
Well, and it is land use. It is one of those ideas where people go, why the heck did you permit three schools?
Yes.
In one area?
Yeah.
Couldn't you see that that was going to be a problem?
Right.
Did you zone it this way fifteen years ago?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep. So you were going to say you feel pretty strongly.
It's somebody's problem, yeah.
Yeah, well, and, and the only thing I was going to say, I don't feel strongly, but I feel like there is benefit in keeping it the way it is just for consistency amongst other communities across the nation. But supplementing and kind of, Chris, what, what, what Councilmember Ray was saying is like, let's try to drill into this though. We have had some success with our other non statistically valid surveys too, in terms of responses over the last couple of years. We have been seeing quite a bit more in some of them. So maybe there's a way to have a community conversation around what to perceive this as and kind of fill in.
I do think we need to be cognizant of what the underlying anger is. Anger is too strong for good. What, what's really driving the negative response and constantly look out for it and see if there are ways that we can respond to it that are low cost, but get to the problem in a, in a very distinct way.
So some of the things that I had thought through when I was trying to determine what do people mean by this is potentially, you know, we look back in time, we had a moratorium partially because. We had a moratorium partially because there was such a large increase in housing and certain housing elements that people did not like. And so do we think this is you're growing too fast?
Exactly.
Exactly. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there as a potential. Maybe it's you're growing faster than your infrastructure is coming on board. And that your infrastructure should come here before.
Another way to say that is if the legislature handed us four hundred and fifty million dollars for our infrastructure and we solved our infrastructure problems, would that solve this issue? Right? That, that's, that's another way to test this. Is it about the, the infrastructure or is it the fundamental character of this community? And I would suggest that if we solved our infrastructure issues, a lot of this stuff, particularly around traffic, right? Uh, I, I, I think if you get anywhere in the city to anywhere else in the city in ten minutes, um, people would not say that they're unhappy with the character of the city.
That is an interesting way of putting it. Yeah, like that a lot.
Now just give us four to ten.
Exactly, to a city of, uh-huh.
Yeah, don't hold that, uh, the total in ten minutes.
Well, this thing here.
Oh.
Okay, so the other thing that I would kind of put down on there that I think we are starting to see, but we also had another question on the survey was about cost of living. And so I think we are seeing a major concern in cost of living and housing costs. But do we think it's part of this? Do we think that's what people mean when they say you have a problem with land use, planning and zoning?
I do think it's kind of in there because, because when you're talking about land use, you're talking about, right? You're talking about what is available there and not, well.
Folks, you're, you're wasting time. So I think if you're really, this is really bothering you, let's put it, let's, let's, let's talk about how we can get more data. This is really gnawing at you. Either we can do a non-scientific survey. We're going to have to probably do some sort of polling facility stuff. Probably next year, we can concern it that way, but you're digging. Right, I should say this more.
We are having fun with it.
You are, and that's great, but I, but I also think, God, that stuff you got to get done.
Yes.
Uh, but if it's really, but, but, but let me think. So if it's really something you want to dig, dig deeper into, let me bring this back to planning, development and environment and say, this came up at your July retreat. Here's some op, here's some things to think about and then you can bring it back to the full council to get more data. Because I think at this point, you're just grasping at concepts. If you want more data, we'll figure out a way to get you more data.
Well, I still think this has been a great conversation about what is the underlying issue. Uh, would anybody like this to come back to PD to get more data? I see a few thumbs up. Um, Kelly.
Go on his first.
Huh?
They do go on his first.
Yes, appreciate that. Kelly, anything you wanted to add in the land use, planning and zoning area?
Yeah, I mean, I think the question, as has been stated many times, is very unclear. I think it would be interesting to do some surveys of like, you know, which of these most accurately describes what you think in terms of land use, planning and zoning? Because I've heard everything from, oh, the central Isqwa plan says that we were going to build seven thousand new housing units by twenty thirty six and we've built one thousand so far. How do we get more? To if they tear down Hobby Lobby to build a five over one, I'm leaving Isqwa. This is literally something that I've heard. And so I think, I think it would be good to have some actual uh data on, you know, what people are referring to. Just, I mean, even, you know, so that it can inform our decision-making or see, you know, where there might be gaps where we might want to, you know, talk with people and educate them about, you know, how the, how w- with light rail coming, we are going to have to do some growth in our regional growth center to accommodate that.
Great. Okay, so defining the, oh, uh, Mayor Pollin.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to um riff a little bit on what Councilmember Jing said. Uh, there's a lot of confusion about what a comprehensive plan says and what it really says is that you're zoned for up to eight thousand units. Because we are not in charge of the building market. And so I think the expectation is that three thousand units will be built by the time our comprehensive plan timeline ends. But we have zoned for more. We don't expect it, but we believe that we can have an infrastructure plan that can match it. So um, I explained this number multiple times out in the community that it's a ceiling, not a floor. And we are right now heading towards our three thousand target and that's a good thing. So we're growing at the pace that the council outlined in their plans, for sure.
Thanks. Okay, yep, going over, um, seeing if we can define what the community means when they say we are having a problem with economic vitality and development. Now, I will note this one was much closer to the center than the others, but it is in that um, bottom right-hand quadrant. So does anybody want to tap out on what do people mean when they say this is a problem? I will just jump out there and say, I don't think mo- most residents don't deal with the difficulty of finding commercial space or getting through permitting. So I don't think this is about creating businesses or any of those difficulties. I think we took this to economic vitality mission. That's what they would say because they experienced that. But I don't think that's what most residents say. I think they're talking more about job availability and comparing us to Bellevue and Redmond that have more job opportunities. But interested to hear from others. Do we feel like this is because there aren't enough shops and stores for people as consumers? Do we feel like this is because it's difficult to create businesses or build new businesses?
From the perspective of the normal, like, um, of the average response taker of the survey, it's more like people want an access to a variety of goods and services in their community. And I think it also gets back to what Councilmember Ray was saying in that it's accessible and it's close and it's easy to get to, right? So, so not just having kind of a bunch of the same things that kind of come in and out of, uh, retail space, um, but having that kind of walkable, almost, I mean, I would love to, when we talk about solutions, talk about like, what can we do around neighborhood center and businesses and access to things that are closer to you for those kind of convenience goods, like groceries, like cafes, like dry cleaners, like that, we can talk about that in a minute. But um, yeah, in addition to being able to have a job, like being able to have access to a variety of things you need so you stay in town more often. You don't have to go to Bellevue Square. You don't have to go to the, yeah, that you might need. I think that's what.
Okay, any other comments here? We've got two different ideas, yes?
Yeah, everybody that I know that lives here, that has a job, that can pay for a single-family home here, either commutes way up four oh five to Kirkland and beyond, or way down south to Redmond and beyond. Every single person. I don't even have anybody that I know that commutes to Seattle. It's all northeast or southeast side. And so it's the four oh five and it's the horror of the morning and afternoons commutes. And so all those people would have jobs much closer if there were available jobs much closer, but that's where all the jobs are. So, you know, how do you uh break that loop, right? And, and some of it's a regional solution, right? If, you know, we keep, we've been hearing for ten years that East Gate is going to take off, right? And it's only taken off for T-Mobile, right? It hasn't, beyond that, it has, it's like the airplane running down the runway and it just doesn't lift off yet. Um, but you know, that's a regional solution. If there were, if there were lots of good jobs in East Gate, um, that, that would address it too. It just hasn't happened yet. So I think that's part of what people are talking about. People that I know, it's just in, Isqwa is infamous, right, for these horrible communities. And I have, I have forty-five minutes to an hour each way every day um to get up to Babel. So we need, we need, that's what people talk about, but they talk about it.
Does this relate to your other topic of bringing another Costco inside of employer to town?
Yeah.
So that economic development really means, uh, perhaps, let me know if I'm wrong, reaching out to or trying to recruit or trying to find that next Costco. It may be a business that only brings in six million dollars here right now, but has potential to grow, something like that?
Yes, and that's exactly right. We, we should hire the same consultants that Chris Gregoire uses for her Seattle, whatever the, the thing she's got for Seattle. We should hire those same consultants, at least small amounts of them, to help us figure out how to get our executive engagement. We should do things like, um, uh, we have ten million dollar houses, like, right? Those are the houses that CEOs want. So we should have somebody saying, hey, CEO, you can have great commercial and you can have your ten million dollar house three minutes away.
Councilmember Ray?
I think, I think it's both. I think it is the, it's commercial and it's unemployment house. I only have one concern about another Costco employment hub. If you want to exacerbate traffic, that, because as much as we'd like to think that, that our new Costco plus company, uh, all of their employees are going to live in Isqwa? No, they're not. They're going to live in Maple Valley. They're going to, they're going to live in Sumner and they're going to be commuting here um to work. Because that's what we see from Costco. If you look at Costco's traffic pattern, uh, there are not a lot of Costco employees in Isqwa. So that's a challenge.
Though they did provide sixty million dollars in infrastructure.
They did indeed, but um, um, and we love that. But um, if you want to exacerbate a problem, that, that's when um, it's a view with pride and approach with alarm.
Yes. Goodness, yeah.
Councilmember Jing, anything to add on economic vitality or development definition?
Yeah, I think, I think, I, just in terms of economic vitality and development, again, I don't know if we have a good sense of what that means for people out in the community. Like, I've heard some people say, oh yeah, I would love to have, you know, more better restaurants. I haven't really heard people in the community say, oh yeah, I would love for there to be like a Microsoft office in Isqwa or something like that. Um, so I think, you know, to the extent possible, it would be interesting to get more of a sense of what people mean when they talk about economic vitality um in the city of Isqwa.
Okay, great. So we still have some kind of a little bit of confusion or uncertainty in the land use, planning and zoning and the economic vitality. But we have come much closer to a definition, understanding, or at least next steps in each of those areas. So the next thing that we want everybody to do is write down whatever ideas, projects or policies, and we're going to need a new flow of traffic one, if you would, um, for each of these areas. And then after we have done all of our writing, we will go around, I'm going to make the executive decision, five dots. Five dots that can be used on each of these areas um in order to upvote potential solutions. Kelly, what we're going to have you do is chat into the host. Um, your projects, policies or ideas for each of these three areas and we'll write them down for you. And then as, we're going to go through and do dots and maybe I will have Bali or somebody take a picture of each of the three things and send it to you and then you can tell us where you would want to put your five dots. Sound good?
Sounds good.
Excellent. Okay. Do we have pens sitting around? Yes.
It would be yellow because you have a green and similar.
I do have a bright green.
I'm yellow.
Okay. So we're going to write our ideas down and then before we vote, we want to take pictures of the three of those and send it to Kelly so that she can tell us where she would put her five pieces.
It's a green, a purple and a black, you're.
Yeah. We're just writing them down. Yeah.
Zach, you're orange.
Going to mute us just while you're.
You're gonna mute us just while you're.
Okay, so Kelly, we're gonna send you the, um, three, um, pictures of kind of the ideas that we came up with that include some of your stuff. Um, we want to take a few minutes just to explain any of these things and then we will go around, you're gonna have five dots. So as you're seeing the pictures, you can start to think about where you would put your dots. Um, so, does anybody want to explain anything on blow up traffic? Yes, go ahead.
So I, uh, first of all, the reader boards, I think we made as good a use of those as we could. And you can go from Seattle, uh, during rush hour to Isquah, you'll see that they'll put up there, how long will it take to get into rush traffic? How long will it take to get into Isquah? Yeah, the same idea here, you know, we put it on Front Street, it'll take you fifteen minutes or whatever.
To get through the city.
Yeah, it, you know, so that would be enough for your reader boards, but I think it's great, yeah. And then uh, do more to encourage bus ridership, uh, you know, we see from our figures, we used to have like close to four thousand people. So did they get out of the habit of riding buses, whatever, you know, I think we could do a marketing plan and encourage people to, um, reach out to the bus. That, I'm not explaining any of the other.
Well, I'll do my contribution. It sounds like you guys have the same one, but, um, you know, the disrespect in talent is because you're stuck in traffic trying to make a right turn. And, and there's only six cars making that right turn and there's seven thousand ways to do that. You have a longer right turn, so you can get into a dedicated lane, um, say at the airport. That makes the, uh, soul sucking nine hundred go there. So that is, you're talking a lot into the intelligent transportation system, which is how we use technology and say there's stuff to really improve flow of traffic around the town.
Uh, my idea, explore one-way traffic on busy streets related, that just means Front Street in the morning, north. It just, both lanes would be north. Evening would be south, both lanes south. And that's to get people just through the city, you know, it's, uh, moving traffic through. I know we'll have some problems for it potentially, uh, right away, but an idea to explore.
See, I would actually go the other direction to change people's behavior so that it goes north in the evening to discourage people from going on our city streets in order to try and go south.
You like, you like sucking souls of other people.
No, I mean, I care more about the residents of Isquah than the people that are going through, yeah. Yeah, yeah. What?
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, did I, did I keep you lying?
Okay, so, uh, land use planning and zoning, does anybody want to talk about that? Mine is the first one where I said focus on small housing projects. I think right now we give MFTE and tax abatement ideas to big projects, but I wonder whether there is possibility to look at ways to build some of those small housing projects with a better tax efficiency. Um, and whether that could be a possibility in those areas that would also help to build up the small housing, um, builder community, um, because I think we've lost a lot of that in near years.
I love the idea. MFTE right now is only available for sixty percent AMI. We talked about making it eighty percent. Uh, if we do that, I think more home builders would come in and, and actually build the units. The other thing we could do is, is MFTE, the way the units are stacked, it only starts at a certain level. We could either give credit for the affordable housing that's already in there as part of that, um, ramp up or other ways to give better accounting for the units. So MFPs qualified earlier for a builder.
So one of the ways that that came into mine for me is in PD, we're talking about, uh, impact fee scaling based on the size of the unit. And so just what other tools we have to focus on encouraging both small homes, starter homes, and smaller housing projects, um, that, you know, incrementally increase that don't have the scary concept of, you know, the, the change. Anybody else?
Oh, so, uh, Nancy Bollas for faith-based landlords. I recently attended, uh, Management Housing held a conference on, uh, uh, faith-based, uh, landlords that want to convert or to build affordable housing. So Nancy Bollas is somebody that built this already to the place. And it has incentivized there to be five different churches to, uh, start developing affordable housing. So, uh, churches are losing their congregations and so there's some, there's land there still. Uh, advocates for both positive plans in the incremental form and then support for homeowners wanting to be used through.
So I will just note on here, all of our ideas in this area are land use and housing, um, but that wasn't necessarily what we said the community needs. And so it may be that we have fewer solutions here because the solutions are in the other areas, um, just to note. So for economic vitality and development, um, anybody, uh, somebody wrote implement the economic development action, like, there's a lot of things in that plan. What does somebody mean by that?
As he hides.
That?
Yeah, I, that's kind of a catchall, I think. Like, like, for me, it was like, we've already done all this work and we had the community come together and do all this work in the plan and there are near-term actions in the plan. Maybe that should be something we prioritize. So I wrote that there, see if anyone, but the, the other point around kind of corner-based businesses is the one I'm much more interested in. And frankly, the one that I hear from community members much more.
So this together is the same idea.
Yeah.
Uh, so zoning review is for neighborhood-based, um, centered businesses, all of them called corner stores, uh, more close to community. Um, so we've got some executive engagement plan to bring more professional jobs.
Yeah.
Um, for our small businesses, more aggressive outreach to potential new business. Okay, so this is focusing more on these smaller side of things that have the potential to grow and not trying to draw a larger business from.
And I just want to point out, Chris, Chris and I had a good conversation, uh, conversation, that thing about the executive engagement plan, I initially started saying, well, Costco's, it's not a city, it's professional jobs and how do you bring those, you know, it could be a missing middle employer.
Okay, so we each have five.
Something like that. I, I liked it, but I wanted to actually make it stronger instead of encourage mixed use. I would actually say insist on mixed use instead of encourage.
Uh, so Kelly, that was one of yours. Do you want to expand on what that was? I know you actually wrote more, but I just wrote that out of the mind.
Yeah, so my whole thing, I said, explore creative solutions to getting commercial space and new developments. For example, in Tacoma, in some of their new mixed-use buildings, they have a lot of vacant storefronts. So the city is doing master leases in those buildings and using those spaces to incubate small businesses. Um, we could also potentially explore, you know, having a mixed-use building that the ground floor is like a coworking space, which could be something that, you know, gets at more of that professional type job market for folks that potentially already live in Isquah and work from home. Um, so, you know, things like that to, just different solutions, because I think like, we can mandate it, but then if it comes online and it stays vacant for a long time, we need to have some ideas of what we could do to actually get businesses to locate there.
I, one thing I didn't get a chance to put down, but it's kind of, it's brought up for me is the work. Uh, I was surprised how quickly the worklogs printed out. And I think one of the things that it shows is there's an interest in a smaller office space that doesn't have a five-year lease time or a ten-year lease time, like more of these commercial retail spaces. Um, and so whether there is an interest in encouraging any of that. Should I put it down?
I mean, that's definitely something like a need that exists that we hear about. Same with like maker spaces and art spaces. Like, I don't know if that necessarily relates to finding this problem, but absolutely.
And you really hit on something, uh, that, that just kind of popped in, which is, how do we help developers see the value in commercial space? Um, because their pushback invention, which doesn't work for me, but then that does work for them because they don't know how to do it. So how do we help them understand the value proposition?
And in banks who finance.
Yeah.
Well, you, that's an important issue. Or are you talking about personal, you got?
Oh, I think it's a part of issue.
Yeah.
Help tell the story of demand or?
Yeah.
Well, um, I want to jump in on this financing thing, because I don't think it's just helping to tell the story, because the underwriting requirements, it's not like for us to be like, hey, this is something that's real and happening, like, it's the, the underwriting standards are coming from like Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, and they're not gonna, you know, give exceptions for Isquah.
Fannie Mae.
Okay, I said. Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Ah, okay. Yeah, basically, like, I think the, it's not so much how can we tell the story as much as understanding what their requirements are for being able to underwrite the income and see if there's something that the city can do to help with that. Like, you know, if the city is offering a master lease and we can be the anchor tenant, you know, we can be the equivalent of like a Costco and Trader Joe's. And I mean, there's obviously some risk for us there, but something to explore as well.
The Portland debt.
That's the Portland debt, Susan?
But we're not assigned.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I was gonna say, what I, uh, uh, text, how to just send it directly, trying to help them make a fence out and that's part of the underwriting, um, because that's why.
So we have all of these ideas. We have five stickers. Kelly, if you will, note yours down in chat. We will put your stickers up.
What, five minutes?
You have one too many.
Yeah, those parts are getting going.
Yeah.
They, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, this is the same.
Yeah, we know we have to do it.
Five of them, is that our ratio number?
Yeah, five.
Wow.
Oh, you're putting another one up? You're putting, oh, that's good. Okay, but it, do you have a color for Kelly?
I have yellow for chips, but.
Right, yes, there we go. Uh, but. Quite yet.
Okay, I know, it's difficult. Okay. Kelly, I think you only put four. If you want an extra one, you can put another one.
Um. I don't know, I think four is fine now.
You can always.
Okay, maybe, maybe I'll, I'll give, I'll give a, a second one to zoning for neighborhood businesses. Just for you, council member Hall.
Interesting, because you're the only one of us who is putting dots on there without having seen where everybody else put them.
Oh, this is true. I have no idea where other people put them.
Yeah. So far, you haven't been alone, but do you want to put a second one somewhere?
Oh, I think the, actually, a home builder roundtables, I think that one, I missed it the first time.
One on home builder roundtable. Okay. So, I would say we have a lot of consensus. Um, so in flow of traffic, we've got five on longer right turn pocket on SR nine hundred in Talus. We've got four on the traffic study on north-south improvement options. Three on I T S, the intelligence transportation system. Two on do more to encourage bus ridership. I assume that was what that was for us all? Or was yours on reader boards?
Mine was on reader boards.
Okay.
The one I did at the game.
There we go. One on reader boards, one on encourage bus ridership, one on create viable alternatives to drive. Okay. So maybe three things standing out there certainly. Um, and we'll get pictures of these and send them over to you, Kelly, as well. Um, land use planning and zoning, we've got five on the home builder roundtables. Three on focus on small housing projects and one on support for homeowners wanting to build ADUs. And then going over to economic vitality. Two, three, four, five. Eight on corner stores. That's the standout of what I didn't think we were going to see in conversations today. Eight votes for corner stores. Um, two for executive engagement to bring more professional jobs. And one for small process of rental.
And how do we get eight votes?
Vote twice.
Okay.
All of us voted once and then Russell voted, or Chris voted twice. Chris always votes twice. He loves that, that's the idea. Okay, so I think we've got some creative ideas here of things that haven't necessarily been a focus for council or even necessarily the community.
Can I ask question?
Yeah.
So the traffic ones are outside of our control. So we have to talk about state. So how much energy, effort, resources do you want? Because a right-turn pocket on SR nine hundred could be a 10-year project with the state of Washington.
So none of that roadway is under our mission.
Or right away.
So, so we would, we, we could, we could get a, a theory, we could get a permit. We'd probably have to have a special legislation. I mean, they're not going to give us a permit. We'd have to have law passed forcing a permit and then pay whatever the capital cost. So I mean, I guess I'm just looking at order of magnitude.
Are, are reader boards in our region? Can we handle those if we put those up?
Yeah, no, reader boards are. But a long, but a right-turn pocket would require Washdott, either doing it or providing us the ability to do it. Which would be even harder than us just doing it. Um, and then the traffic study for north-south traffic operations, recognizing that any solution from a study we paid for is likely outside of our ability to implement. I'm not, I'm not trying to poo-poo any of this. I'm just trying to get, you know, what kind of resources would we want to allocate? These are lobbying resources more than they are engineering resources.
Well, this is that third dimension we talked about.
Exactly, exactly. So I, I don't want to leave you. I want you, this has been wonderful. Local government professional, I want to cry. This has been great. But I also feel obligated to say that some of these are hard and outside of our ability to easily implement.
So since I was the one who voted twice on the pocket and, um, wrote it down, um, yeah, it's going to be hard. But there's very few things that we can do at all around traffic, particularly north-south, and nothing that we can do that's not hard. So if we're going to do something, you know, you know, when we talked about the overcrossing, undercrossing, it's like, well, that, we need to do something big for this city. This is far less significant than that, different significantly. But it's something that actually would make a difference. And I think council member Dan really hit it. If you live in, in Talus, it's the only thing that matters.
Okay.
Is you're backed up, and some days you're backed up dying ninety.
Yeah. And, and I would say, if you look at that area, the right-hand lanes are very unused.
Darn it.
Well, the, the right-hand lanes brought on the.
From nine hundred to Newport?
From ninety to Newport are very unused. And so it seems like a waste to have that there.
Unless you've got a, you can lane going all the way down, uh, from Newport down. So the, the asphalt exists. It's, it's how it's striped. It's a striping problem.
Yeah.
And, and, but no, Polly's right, it's a political problem.
But it's, but it sounds like, again, thinking about bid-by budget, you know, do we want to hire a consultant that would come up with some solutions that then we shop? I mean, I think we would need, you know, an engineering solution that we could go to our state representative uh, and ask for legislation or ask for the leaning into Washdott to make happen. So does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
That we would look at what that might cost and then come to you with mid-buy, with the, with the budget, city budget allocation to do at least some preliminary engineering. Okay?
Mayor Polly?
To you, council president. So I agree that this one looks simple. I also agree that we should work on it. The reason it isn't that simple is because the state now has no desire to four-lane the rest of the road. And so again, you're taking multiple lanes of traffic every evening and squeezing them onto a lane. And it kind of stinks. Um, but I do think that's worth following. One thing I am concerned about is that the environmental impact statement for central Issaquah allowed the city to create a P A O, a planned action ordinance. And in that, it said, you can fit in eight thousand more housing units and X number thousands of jobs if you build the following projects. The over-under crossing is one of the projects. While it may be out of our reach, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea for council maybe to go back at some point and have a look at what that environmental impact statement says, because the city's obligations are clearly listed in there. And so if there is maybe a, a lack of funding, a lack of will to do that project, then the zoning doesn't hold up anymore. It wouldn't be in compliance with the planned action ordinance if the city's not going to follow through on its commitments. So I don't want to compare state Route nine hundred, which I think is a different beast and one worth pursuing, to not working on or working on the over-under crossing, which is a required project for the city to do if eight thousand additional residential units are going to go in. So I do think it might be helpful to have a future conversation about what exactly is in that planned action ordinance and what are the city's responsibilities?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so while you highlighted, hey, the longer right turn pocket is a political problem. And so you've asked, are we interested in?
Right. So what I think I've heard is, yes, you are interested. And so I'm going to suggest that I'll go back to the staff and say, what would an order of magnitude be for some preliminary engineering? And come back to the council, the mid-buy with that. Um, the traffic study north-south, how, where does that fit in the world of wishes?
So I think my question there is, are we looking for any potential answers that are fully in our control? Things like changing.
The road right here. Right, is an example. What, what could we do if we really wanted to solve this problem, this road moving parts?
Yeah, um.
We haven't, we haven't touched what we want to do with this road, other than it's eighty million dollars of existing commitments. But the commitments that we have to this road doesn't add one car of capacity.
Yeah. So that would be the question is, are we focused on throughput capacity? Or are we focused on ability to get on and off the road in the city?
Are you saying intra versus inter?
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm trying to enshrine what I heard today, which is that north-south traffic is the thing that we're most concerned with. So if that's a thing we're most concerned with, we should do a study on how to improve it. You know, I, I give this example. I don't know if this is an intra or an inter. I'm not as hard over as some about making sure it's just intra, not also inter. But I don't know, I just know that we as a group said today, north-south is a big deal. So, you know, Torson or Torson's twenty-first century equivalent should be put on this.
So let's dig in a little bit more. Do we need data that tells us how bad the problem is? Do we need, like, which of the roadways is more of a problem? Do we need creative solutions that are entirely in our control? Do we need to need data that points the finger that says we need to talk to King County? We can't solve this without them?
If, if we identified a new bypass, right, not where the old bypass was, but a new bypass, a new bypass, and it costs fifty million dollars and it solves traffic, or it costs a hundred million dollars and it solved traffic. We could go to the voters and the voters would give us a hundred million dollars if it solved traffic. Because they care about traffic that much. But we don't have anything to offer them, right? We don't, we don't have anything other than, yeah, you're right, it's.
That's because we don't control the traffic beyond our city.
But we control our city.
Let me go.
And I give you this example of something that we, oh, one hundred percent control. I guarantee you, there is a fifty million dollar solution that would move the needle that involves the street. We might not like it. I don't, I don't, I, I, but I know there's solutions out there of that magnitude that would have an impact on traffic. Now, we might not like it because it would make it easier for people from Maple Valley to come through here, but it would also make it easier for our own residents to get through. We should have a conversation about these options. Fifteen years ago, we took the bypass off the table, right? We should look at, are there other options? Maybe there aren't. Maybe we have our traffic people look at it. There's nothing you can do. For some reason, Newport isn't amenable to helping us. Um, but we should, we should have that conversation and I don't believe we've had it.
So, uh, Mayor Polly, and then I'll come back to what Wally's question was.
Sure. Um, I think the first thing, not the council, but the council, the community need to answer is, are we going to accommodate the traffic or not? So my first twenty years in town, the engineering theory was help them get through faster. And then it'll get better. And help them get through faster just meant more cars coming through. And then most of our concern back in the early nineties was the valley folks, people that live north of eighteen. Since then, people south of eighteen are the ones who now have added twenty thousand vehicles. Because Maple Valley and, um, Black Diamond are building thousands of housing units. And the state is not going to deliver on Highway eighteen. So I think the first question is, do they come through or not? Rather than going to an engineer and say, solve this problem, you have to stay with the community and ask. Um, I personally have always been on the, I don't think they should be able to come through a historic area of town. I'm not saying they shouldn't become any, through any area of town, but definitely not the historic area of town. I think that was a huge mistake, uh, that Highway eighteen stopped getting built in nineteen ninety-three. Big, big, big mistake. But it's also three different partners. The county doesn't even have the money to do the roundabouts on its Squaw Hobart Road, let alone to expand it. And if they expand it, we're just encouraging more cars. And I'm kind of with the council president on this is, this is another car solution. That's not what we should be talking about in twenty twenty-five. But you can have a phased solution. One of the reasons I haven't pushed really hard on the internal city of physical conversations is because I think Highway eighteen travelers have to have that option before we say, you can't come through our town. And the reason is, we would be pushing them into an extremely unsafe situation. That is, one of the deadliest highways in Washington State. And Issaquah saying, we haven't got any idea except to make more of you use it, is not what a regional partner should really do. So Highway eighteen should happen. The roundabouts on Issaquah-Hobart Road should happen. Roundabouts, and I talked about this with Zach probably eight years ago, exactly, almost eight years ago. There should be more roundabouts that make the drive through Issaquah a pleasant urban drive and not, not open two-lane road. There should be roundabouts where the Second Avenue comes into Front Street, potentially at the pool, potentially an all-way stop at Front and Sunset. That's phase two. You get the commuter folks an alternate safer way to go. And coincidental with that, the county and the city tries to find funding in order to turn the roads back into county roads and a city road. And so it's lots of different things. But I don't think you know from the community if they want you to tear down all the buildings on Front Street and create four lanes to get more people through, or they don't want them coming through at all.
So I think Wally's question was, do we want to devote money to a traffic study? Especially if it's only going to indicate that the problem is outside of our area. But I think through this conversation and, you know, all of the ideas and concepts up there, we probably need more time on this.
So would you like to do a committee of the whole or send it to mobility?
Thoughts?
Create a little.
Committee of the whole?
Great. So give us, give us a little time to, you know, get the engineers off the floor. Oh, I tell them about all this.
Oh, yeah.
They talked about.
I T S, um, you know, it remains a priority. It's funding's going to be the challenge. And so, you know, we can come, uh, maybe we should just do an update to mobility and infrastructure, um, where we stand, what we think twenty-six looks like for I T S.
I want to see a picture of the budget.
Land use home builder roundtable, obviously that's easy enough to do. When do you, do you want it now? Do you want to do it at first of the year?
Yeah, I think that's probably a twenty-six issue, something that we can pull together with a new council in there.
Focus on small housing projects that probably also needs a larger discussion. Would like to get a new economic development and housing manager on. Do you want to send that to a committee or do that as a committee?
Well, it seems like a couple of things this year have come up in terms of I H I usage too. So maybe.
So what is it?
Uh, the baseball housing investment pool, those are.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So maybe, yeah, when we have the manager in place, because like I know Kelly has talked about, can we use that for smaller investments?
So do you want committee of the whole or want to send it to, um, plan development environment, I guess?
Yeah, probably P D E or do you want to, yeah, okay.
Maybe mid-year next year is target or?
Oh, no, no, I think, I mean, we could do an initial discussion before the end of the year.
Okay. I want the economic development person to get on board and get.
Right, right. So I'm, I'm thinking, I'm not thinking August, but I'm thinking October, November, but do it at P D E?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, support home builders on ADUs. Um, support home builders on A D U's.
I got one vote, um.
Okay, well, that's probably enough. And then economic vitality, code amendment for corner stores. P D E is going to bring the larger tightly team discussion topics next council meeting. And then the council's going to have to decide what they want to do with that. If that's a larger, maybe the whole discussion and to look at the whole list. Quite honestly, I think that's what you all want to do. Yeah, so I, I think we'll add that to that list, and then we'll just start looking for a committee of the whole time for the year. Put everything we've got, maybe do an exercise like this with dots and whatnot.
We love our dots.
Well, because I think the challenge is, there's a lot of really great ideas. You know, then it's the three dimensions, we're going to leave today with the whole three-dimensional list here. So creative ideas versus resources and money. So maybe we plan to do a committee of the hall, but do it like this. Maybe not, not surely this, but flat on the floor with, put your paper and all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, Mayor Paulie's remarks. I was thinking the same thing. There is a solution to Front Street, and that is we could tear Front Street down and wipe it to port late. And so, uh, I mean, we could, I mean, that would be a solution. Uh, so her remarks kind of figure for me, maybe this is a uh, a bigger discussion about the value that we attach to the historic area. Um, and I, I just, I believe that I hear all the time from people who value the historic part of this bunch so highly. So if people are presented with, you know, those kinds of thoughts, I'm just wondering if we'd also get clarity for people about how much they want to preserve downtown and what does that mean for a long-range planning, because those people are getting older. You know, uh, I think there's, I think she's raised a bigger issue than just traffic there. So I'm just throwing that out.
Well, and I think the bypass also raises the issue of can we build, add lanes to build ourselves out of this situation?
That's another.
Because right now we have all of these areas that funnel down into a one-lane road at the end south that we don't have any control of. So, and would we even want to expand that to two lanes? Because that would just bring more people into the city.
Where people would just.
To commute through. So, uh, Councilmember Marks?
So ju- just to be clear, uh, if you, for instance, added a third lane to Newport right here, right? You would be bypassing the store downtown, right? You would, you would not be running traffic right through downtown. Uh, I just, I just want to point that out. Like, we're not saying let's destroy the city, uh, to allow more Maple Valley drivers to come through. I just think that this body has said north-south traffic is the issue. We should put some smart people at work on that problem, one way or the other.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Yeah, and so it sounds like we've come away with some potential future conversations on these things, but I really want to start by just thanking you for engaging on these big, meaty issues and these big concepts of, these are the areas that the community has said are important and they're dissatisfied. And so being able to really dig into what are they dissatisfied about and what can we address, um, are really good ways to spend our time. Uh, let's see. Oh, Mayor Paulie.
You just don't have the agenda open. Are there more items? I just want to, uh, whenever council president wraps it up, I'd love to share a few comments that I have.
Well, that was basically my wrap-up. Uh, I don't think there's anybody on the public online, so no public comment, so.
Great. I think you had an excellent conversation today. The things that get me super excited. The focus on the north-south traffic and the focus on state Route nine hundred, those are major pain points for a huge portion of our community.
Nine hundred is where we lost you.
Um, those are major pain, pain points for our community. And so I am so excited. You devoted so much time to that today. Uh, smaller housing units, uh, let's figure out how to make it really, really easy. I love accessory dwelling units. There are hundreds of examples, maybe fifty examples down in Old Town that are just all different and all wonderful, and I want to make that super easy to bill. And then thank you, Councilmember Marks. The third dimensional analysis piece that you are doing is just so much more than other councils consider. You know, you can really get lost in the exciting ideas, but the practicality is we only can fund so much and we're only in charge of so much. So I love looking at the priorities of our community and figuring out the ones where we can do something, where we can lobby, and ones where, where there's not a whole lot we're going to be able to do to make our community um, satisfied. So these conversations that you are having are, uh, in my opinion, significantly elevated from some of the other councils in our neighboring cities. So I thank you for taking that amount of time, but also, um, for focusing on those priorities that came out of the community survey. I think you did a really great job today. Thanks for coming in on Saturday. Thank you to the staff for, uh, the presentation materials. Welcome to our new finance director. Uh, great job. Great work, you guys.
Um, do we have anything else coming through? Okay, with that, I will, Marcus adjourned it to a three P M. Thank you.